Following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the middle with a religion and justice for our all.
Thank you, everyone, and please be comfortably seated. I'll go ahead and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin, Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
All members are present.
Very good. We have a lengthy agenda today, so obviously I'll ask staff to be succinct and efficient and thorough, but prior to the beginning of the presentations, we will start with public presentation in order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns. Please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table, near the agendas, or available from the communications and marketing person in the back of the room. Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Be concise and to the point, avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings, and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. And I just have one other note, that Mr. Johnston is out on an emergency moment this morning, and Mr. DiLorenzo will sit in the chair during the meeting today. So with that, I would invite the public, for any comments that are not related to the presentations that follow, to please come forward to the podium and share. Yes, sir?
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Councils. It's a pleasure to be here again to say hi to everybody. I just want to introduce myself, John Furlong.
Bring that just a little closer, only because we do have some folks listening. Thank you.
Is that better?
Much. And bring it closer so you don't have to bend over, so it's comfortable. There you go.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. John Furlong, just introduced myself. I am the Director of Flagler County for the CSPOA, which is the Constitutional Sheriff's and Peace Officers Association. We're working in Flagler County and all 67 counties in the state of Florida to make every county in the state of Florida a constitutional county. With what's going on in our world right now, we need the Constitution to be the steadfast of our nation, of every citizen of every group. We believe in the lesser magistrate, which is the way the Constitution is written, power at the city level to state to federal. We need a dome of protection for the citizens at the local level. I've already been in contact with commissioners, I've already been in contact with sheriffs daily. We have put together what we call an ordinance. We want to take our city and county resolution of a constitutional county, and we want to elevate it to an ordinance, to give more teeth to help the sheriff and his deputies and his CER teams, which is Community Emergency Response Teams, to enact, if anything they need help to keep peace and order in the county. I like this opportunity to bring this to your attention, because it's for everyone who's taken an oath of office that we're looking to work with. Basically, this ordinance is basically like renewing your wedding vows. Everyone's already taken the oath. We believe in your heart, you're trying to do the right thing every single day for our citizens. So I'd like to bring this to your attention, and I'd like to bring a copy to you when it's official. Right now, we have a resolution, well, an ordinance that's been written by the Collier County that's already been accepted. We're working on the verbiage for Flagler County, and I'd love an opportunity, when I get in full writing, to present it to the city council for your review, because I'd love you on board to help protect the citizens of Flagler County.
Very good. Thank you for that.
You're very welcome. Thank you for all you do.
And beyond my responsibility, our responsibilities as elected officials, your initiative is very near and dear to my heart, my family's heart as well. So I would ask if you would reach out to me so that we could have a one-on-one conversation, so that I could understand it better and more thoroughly. And obviously, I would ask that you might contact each city council member individually so that they can better understand some of the details underlying what you're trying to do. And if you have the time, I'm sure that we would be able to find time to do that. So please do that for us, okay?
I appreciate it.
Very good.
Thank you for all you do, again, folks.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning. My name is Kathy Saris, and I think I was here last week. And I want to thank you. I was here to draw awareness and for help on the euthanasias at the Flagler Humane Society. I just want to say it was overwhelming response by the community. Our community is very much an animal-loving community. They are very giving and in support of not doing euthanasias at the shelter. I did meet with a few of the staff members yesterday. They had reached out to me, or she had reached out to me to see if I would meet with her, so I did go. We can, I don't agree with their decisions of their checkmarks for euthanasia. I believe that all dogs act differently outside of the shelter. And I, like last week, I said I had a biter, I have a growler, and I have one that didn't like kids. All three of them are none of them right now. So dogs' behavior and personality are totally different, and we have a volunteer that had a training and boarding facility up north. She has offered her services, and the director didn't even know about that, so they have a lack in communication. And they themselves deem the dog dangerous without an evaluator or a trainer come in. So I think they need some kind of a panel to decide, okay, this, this, this. They said they talked to the veterinarian, I don't know if it was over the phone, I don't, the veterinarian, in just a few minutes of a visit, does not know the personality or demeanor of a dog. One of them there doesn't even deal with cats, I'm told. And this is all hearsay, except for my meeting yesterday. So I think it's still ongoing. I did get something that says it was closed, but maybe that was just because someone had reached out to them, I don't really know. But I just really want to thank you all, and thank all the citizens here. It just gives me chicken skin goosebumps, just to know this community loves the animals as much as I do.
So we thank you for your comments, and you certainly have got the attention and the concern of the city council, certainly was my observation at the last meeting. I do have one assignment. I'd like a copy of whatever existing agreement the city has currently with the organization to be shared with each city council member, so we can better understand all of the different pieces and be more fluent in our either discussion or be able to analyze what we've heard better. And Councilwoman, did you have a comment?
Just really quickly to piggyback on that, can we also get a copy of any agreement Flagler County has, as well as the city of Bonnell?
Yes, Mayor, City Council will get that to you today.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we thank you for bringing your comment forward.
I appreciate all your efforts.
Very good. Is there a next speaker that would like to address me at this time? Yes, sir?
Good morning. Jeffrey Seib. I am speaking today about the 2050 Comprehensive Plan Discussion presented by Mr. Tyner at the meeting two weeks ago, having to do with Chapter Four, Public Recreation in Open Space. Parks are an essential element of a vibrant community. Our city parks are centers of activities for all ages. Parks protect the environment and give us all the opportunity to get outside and enjoy nature. Open spaces in neighborhoods give residents a pleasant view of nature in the city environment. Parks are considered engines of economic activity. I see families at the full sport fields at Indian Trails Park coming from out of town for lacrosse, soccer, flag football tournaments. When the games are over, they head to the stores and restaurants, local establishments. Property values increase where homes are near or adjacent to a recreational amenity. But as we increase in population, we must increase the amount of parkland, because when parks are packed, it reduces the public's outdoor experience. Specifically dealing with the parks found in our city, the measurement criteria for parks in a community is the number of acres of parks per 1,000 residents. The more acreage in parks means lower pressure on the qualities of the park that attract residents. Mr. Tyner states that Palm Coast has 9.9 acres of parks for every 1,000 residents. This park's acreage number is a little on the low side, as the National Recreation and Parks Association recommends 10.6 acres of parks per 1,000 residents in a city our size. Looking at other cities, we see an even greater disparity. Washington, D.C. has 20 acres of parks per 1,000. Austin, Texas, a city approximately our size, has 40 acres of parks per 1,000. And our neighbor to the north, Jacksonville, has 126 acres of parks per 1,000 residents. Factoring in our rate of growth into these numbers means that in 2030, when our population is at 130,000, with no increases in park acreage, the number will be 7.8 per 1,000 residents, below the number of eight acres per 1,000 mentioned by Mr. Tyner. We know from all that is already said at the Comprehensive Plan meetings and to the council right here that we need more parks and sport fields. What I would recommend around these sports fields is a nature trail at the rear of the fields, like for example at Indian Trails Park, a six-foot-wide walkway, wheelchair-accessible, all around the perimeter of the park at the edge of the forest. But the point is, we need to keep our parks growing just as our population is growing. We can't let parks slide out of the picture.
Thank you very much for your comment, and I appreciate your participation in the Imagine 2050 Comprehensive Plan Review. Thank you for that. Yes, sir?
Stick car, Palm Coast. I just want to say I appreciate what Councilmember Pontiere is doing with the traffic study program for the city, looking into that to help protect the residential neighborhoods against speeding and excessive traffic. I just want to thank her. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment. Are there any other speakers that would like to address me at this time? Yes, ma'am?
Good morning. My name is Sharon DeMers, and I live in the B section. And I say that because I've been here long enough to know that when you identify where you live in Palm Coast, you use one of the letters of the alphabet. And I've been here about 14 years, and what I learned is many of our senior citizens, the ones between the ages of 70 and over 80, are on a very limited income, and they cannot afford a tax increase. I have spoken to women that only make $1,200 a month. My utility bill before I use a drop of water is $102. My electric bill this time, first time ever, was over $200. I keep my thermostat at 78. I would like for the city to consider tightening their budgets. I'm a little chilly here. I didn't put my sweater on yet, but I knew better than to bring one. Remember in the Jimmy Carter days, that we all had to turn our thermostats, air conditioning to 78? There's no reason why we can't do that today in our city municipal buildings. All the women all wear jackets. Everyone at the front at the dais is wearing a jacket today, because it's chilly. So please consider not raising our taxes, keeping the rollback rate to what we had before. And we've got all this new housing being built, so there's new tax money coming in. And we just have to figure a way to cut the budgets. You know, a budget is not a wish list, it's a needs list. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to share a comment with me now? Yes, sir?
Ken Lening, I'm in the L section. I'm going to just piggyback on what she said. I have numerous neighbors that are elderly and on a fixed budget. Many people that moved to Palm Coast, they came here to retire. I think you all need to rethink the budget, and I think you need to crunch, and you need to look at the people that are here, and not development and not big business, there isn't any big business here, but development. The people that are here are residents. You need to look at the people. They can't afford increased taxes. Developing more and more is not helping the people that have been residents. I'm new to this area, but the residents that have been here, that came here to retire, they cannot afford it. Everything's going up in price, everything. We're already getting taxed going to the grocery store. We're already getting taxed doing anything. And now you want to raise our taxes? I don't think it's prudent. I don't think it's fair. And I think anyone who has common sense knows it's not good for the community. If you look around, my friend, he rode around in the community yesterday, and there's more and more people selling their homes in Palm Coast, if you look around. I think you need to look. I think you need to think before you act for us, because you are here for us. You're not acting for the people. I don't know who you're representing, but you're not representing the people. Please reconsider and don't raise people's taxes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Tina Laporta, L section. I'm surprised at the lack of attendance here, but it clearly doesn't represent the level of interest that I've spoken to a number of my neighbors, and everybody's very concerned about a tax increase. So I agree with the former two speakers that that should be a last resort, that whatever you can do to eliminate waste or misappropriated funds or whatever, it would be the best option, because people are stretched, and it's just difficult. So, thank you.
We appreciate your comment. Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers that would like to address me at this time? Yes, sir?
Good morning, all. My name is Scott Stapleton, and I'm a Palm Coast resident. Been here about three years. Retired from one of the worst areas to live in the world, Bergen County, New Jersey, which is about 10 minutes from the George Washington Bridge. So we've got New York City and one of the most expensive areas to live in. Well, we worked our whole lives, retired at 62, came here, bought a beautiful house in the W section, and we've been happy as we anticipated we would in retirement. However, a year and a half went by, and we realized that, hmm, I was an accountant for 33 years, did accounts payable for a very large corporation. I thought I was set up for retirement. Well, a year and a half in, with all the things that we were doing to the home to make it our forever home, I just was starting to come up short every month. So basically, I took a job. I work at Home Depot right here in town. I work construction building. I'm 65. I lift 80-pound bags of concrete all day. Last Saturday, I was out in the parking lot for eight hours collecting carts. I don't know, maybe they punished me for some reason. But I realize now that without that income from Home Depot, I can't make it here. And our house has probably gone up in value with all the work that I've done to it personally. And it's just the idea of being an accountant, I can tell you exactly how much gas was four years ago. I can tell you how much food was four years ago. And all I can say is, it is out of control. My wife actually says, if things don't go well in November, we're leaving the United States of America, because that's how bad it is. I just came here, I've never been to another meeting. I could, actually, I thought it was over in Bonnell at the, I guess that's the county courthouse. So I Googled it and found out it was here, and I was just going to come and observe and listen, and then I stopped and I said, well, you know what? If you have an opportunity to let people know, now, my wife worked in the Board of Education for 30 years. She was the secretary to the Director of Special Programs. So fortunately, she's got a nice pension working. However, she'll turn 65 this November, and like I said, between the two of us, you'd think, oh, we're doing well, but I'll tell you what, we struggle to make ends meet. Thank you.
I thank you for your comment. Are there any other speakers at this time?
I think it's a different topic.
Yeah. You really get one bite of the apple, so if you're willing to wait until the end of the meeting, that would be more appropriate. Or, as I had mentioned, get to each one of us, just so I can keep protocol correct. Thank you. Anyone else? If there are no other speakers, I'll close public comment. Any final comments from city council members? I think we kind of addressed it so far. Are we all good with that?
No, I would just, level set. I would just say, hopefully, everybody in the audience knows that last year, we were able to cut $2.5 million from our budget. We had a full rollback rate. Today's Palm Coast residents pay less in taxes adjusted for inflation than they did five years ago, and we have the third lowest tax rate for cities of municipalities our size. And Jimmy Carter was talking about the energy crisis when he said to set your thermostat to 65, not 75. I remember that like it was yesterday.
Just to reinforce what Councilman Clufus says, I mean, every city council member sitting up here is looking for and trying to do everything they can to reduce the tax liability to the barest minimum that they possibly can. And we will continue the discussion through the presentations to look for those possible additional cuts, if they exist and if we can identify them. So we appreciate those comments, and thank you very much. With that, if there are no final comments, then I would move on to our presentations. So if you go to letter E on your agenda this morning, the first presentation is the description, presentation of the proprietary funds budget. So staff can take it away.
Gwen Ragsdale, your Budget and Procurement Manager. Staff is here today to present to you the proprietary fund budgets.
Gwen, just pull that, I know, just pull it just a little bit closer, just in case people on virtually can't pick it up.
So the presentation overview for today, we have the operating budgets for stormwater, water and wastewater, building, collection, sanitation, and information technology enterprise fund. The capital budget for stormwater, water and wastewater will also be presented. So this is an overview of the FTEs for the utility fund, and will be presented on the individual budget slides. There's a total of three new requests. In fiscal year 2024, there were approved reclasses of FTEs to move them where they were most needed. For fiscal year 2025, utility administration is reclassing a position to utility finance. Utility administration in fiscal year 2024 had an FTE that moved from water distribution. Also, an FTE moved from water plant number two to wastewater collection in fiscal year 24. Also, in fiscal year 24, water quality moved an FTE to water plant number two. And for water distribution, two new meter technicians are requested for fiscal year 2025. One position was reclassed in fiscal year 24 and moved to administration. So a lot of moving parts. Slide, this is an overview of stormwater, collections and sanitation, building and information technology enterprise funds. The details again will be presented on the individual budget slides. There's a total of 10 new positions requested in stormwater and one new position in collection and sanitation. We will review detailed expenditure budgets in the next few slides. Council received the detailed budget worksheets last week, and they were added to the city's website for the public. I will now turn the presentation over to Deputy Director Lynn Stevens, who will present the stormwater management fund budget.
Good morning. Again, Lynn Stevens, Deputy Director of Stormwater and Engineering. So the first slide we're going to review is some of the revenues and expenditures. The 2023 rate study recommended obtaining three loans. One was a 10-year loan for the purchase of equipment needed for the additional field crews that were laid out in the rate study and approved. The other two were 20-year loans for capital improvement projects. The equipment loan is in the process of being secured this fiscal year, and the second loan will be processed in FY 2025. The third loan is anticipated to be presented in FY 27. Expenditures for these loans are reflected in the maintenance budget for the equipment and the engineering budget for the capital improvement projects. The other revenue that you see listed on the slide is for inspection and permit fees. The grant revenue is for the state appropriations for the P-1 Weir project that's currently already bid and in process, and the St. John's River Water Management District grant for the London Waterway, which will be discussed in the capital improvement slides. Interfund transfers reflect the amount of the remaining balance of the ARPA funding for the London Waterway project, which is currently under construction, and expenditures will be discussed on the next few slides. The overall change in the FY 25 for the stormwater maintenance budget is a reduction of 4.6%. This reduction is primarily due to the changes in the interfund transfers. The reduction of the interfund transfers was due to the purchase of multiple pieces of equipment in FY 24 for the new canal crew, which began on June 1 of this year, and in preparation of the second FY 25 ditch crew as outlined in the rate study. The remainder of the equipment needed for these positions are being purchased through a loan, as discussed in our May presentation of this year. The increase in personnel services is due to the addition of eight new positions in the maintenance section and the increased cost of health insurance. The approved rate study included adding a second ditch crew, which was five new positions, and a second pontoon excavator operator, which was one new position in the FY 25 budget. As discussed in our department overview presentation to City Council on May 28, staff proposed a second culvert crew. This would require purchasing a new vacuum truck and delay the purchase of the second pontoon excavator. The program would also require one additional equipment operator as a new position in FY 25. This would also, would help increase the level of service in our swale division. Staff further proposed that a second ditch crew would also perform swale spot regrading to increase the amount of swale work around the city. Three of the ditch crew employees would not be brought on board until January 2025, because we would be still waiting for some of the equipment to arrive. An additional swale specialist is also requested to help inspect the areas and the level of service for spot regrades to be performed and to perform swale inspections generated by the Citizen Connect cases.
If I could ask, Jason, could, in the future, not at this council meeting, but could we get just a small recap on how that spot regrading is going for the swales, just a overall performance indicator? Yes, sir. Awesome. Thank you. And just for the public's sake, we very much heard the public's cry out for additional swale maintenance, so this is a response to that.
So moving on to stormwater operations. Overall, the stormwater operations division is requesting a 17.3% increase. This increase includes two additional personnel, as well as the increase in health insurance and an increase in operating expenditures. Much of the increased costs are offset by a decrease Much of the increased costs are offset by a decrease in the interfund transfers and capital outlay expenses. The request for new personnel includes one engineering technician and one finance technician. The engineering technician position is responsible to require, to create swale plan diagrams for new and rehabbed driveway construction. The position also reviews new site plans for single-family homes and duplexes, uh, in both infill lots and subdivisions, as well as reviewing and approving finished floor elevation surveys and final surveys for new construction. Position interacts with contractors, surveyors, as well as staff. Changes in the technical manual have required more intense scrutiny and review of the various level of plans for new construction. This additional workload has exceeded one employee's capacity. Currently, the operations division has one full-time engineering technician who is scheduled to retire at the end of this calendar year. The second engineering technician not only would perform the duties, uh, associated with the, with the construction, but would also assist the GIS specialists to research as-built drawings and reflect various stormwater assets on our map system. The department is also requesting approval of one finance technician. The continued increase in stormwater accounts and activities is affecting the workload of the existing finance staff. The city ended fiscal year FY 23 with a total of 52,215 stormwater billing accounts. Stormwater billing processes, billing adjustments, research, complex stormwater billing changes for commercial properties, large developments and subdivisions, common areas, processes annual vacant stormwater billing, applies late fees, processes delinquent notices, and processes liens and lien releases. Stormwater coordinates between finance, planning, IT, GIS, customer service, and stormwater and engineering departments to create and maintain not only the billing, but the revenue and expense accounts. The increase in operating expenditure is due to realignment of the survey and inspection staff, which moved from our engineering to our operations divisions. The decrease in interfund transfers was for a vehicle that was purchased in FY 24 for the additional inspector that was added, also in FY 24. And the decrease in capital outlay was survey equipment that was budgeted and purchased in FY 24. Moving on to engineering. The decrease in personnel services due to the realignment of staff from engineering to operations is discussed on the previous slide. The difference in operating expenses is due to the reduction of professional and contract service dollars programmed for FY 25. The Stormwater and Engineering Construction Management Division is proposing an 81% increase for FY 25. This increase is for capital outlay, capital improvement projects. Funding for most of these projects will be with the 20-year loan proposed in the previous slide. We'll have more discussion on those capital projects by Mr. Cody later in the presentation.
Is this a, a natural break? We, we didn't really put in Q and A during these slides, so is this a good time to start asking questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if I may, give City Council a chance to ask questions. Um, I see, I think, Gwen, back on your, maybe your first slide or one of your first slides, a, uh, the, the request for three additional, I assume they're FTE, full-time employees. I don't see a dollar amount associated with that. I'm sure it exists somewhere else. Can you just give me an idea what that might represent?
Yes, so on the individual slides, when, um, the director comes up, she will go through those positions and what the request is, what they will be doing, and the dollar amount.
Okay, 'cause I see the, the, the ask for the increase there, and then on a, a future slide, just a couple more in, we're looking at a 4.6% decrease. So I'm just trying to follow the idea here. So on one slide, we're adding FTEs, but there's no dollar amount, then we're moving to a, uh, wonderful, a 4.6 decrease on, on, on the reasons you said. So what I'm looking for, and this can be done individually with me, unless other city council members would reach out to you individually, I need to understand what the purpose or what the need, um, um, for the request for the additional, um, three FTEs there. And, and I would have a similar, um, kind of, uh, question as we go through the balance of the presentations. I also have another comment. I believe that part of the fiduciary responsibility of this body, of these city council members as elected officials, is to offer up policy, sig, policy statements from which staff can then turn those into operational, um, executions, uh, and through the budget process. So as one example, um, there is a specific mention for swale maintenance, which we know has been a topic that is, uh, important to the community as a whole. The question is this, and this may be a discussion you want to have with me singularly at another time, and I understand, but has there been a discussion to subcontract out the swale maintenance to a third party, perhaps using the folks that are currently doing it, but relieving the city of other expenses to reduce our total cost and expense for, uh, reducing swales as a model for which may be third-party, uh, participation in other areas of public works, for example? I don't know that that discussion has happened, uh, uh, Mr. DiLorenzo, but it's something that, that I would like to discuss, and then if each council member wants to, you, you'll decide whether it becomes a, an agenda topic. And I, sorry to take so much time from everybody, but-
Yes, my understanding.
Do we have any other comments from city council members?
I believe we did do some subcontracting out with our lawn maintenance, and I'd like to know how that's going, um, when we have an opportunity, if it's, if it's proven to be a little more cost-effective and efficient. I like the idea of subcontracting out certain things like our swales. I like to put stuff in the hands of businesses and free enterprise. I think, I, I would expect we would get great results from that, so I think it's something we do need to look into, absolutely.
Councilwoman?
Um, so I don't disagree, excuse me, conceptually with looking at, um, you know, the, the cost benefit of contracting out versus doing it in-house. My only concern is, I know that right now, if somebody, um, contacts me and says my swale is, you know, overflowing at this time, and it's not draining within the recommended 48 hours, you know, can we get staff to come out and look at it? I can reach out to staff, and, and that is something that they can look into. We, we won't have that benefit with a contracted-out service. So I just want to caution, um, there's ups and downs going that route. So, uh, we need to look at all of that, obviously. Um, and that's just your level of service, right? What are we going to commit to the residents as a level of service? Um, I have somewhat of the same concerns with regards to the positions. I recognize that we asked you all, and, and I think you're doing a fantastic job, by the way, dealing with, I think, not just the swales, but the stormwater issues that we've had. I feel like we're finally starting to tackle the drainage issues. And the education campaign that goes behind this is that the drainage doesn't happen in the swales, right? The importance of the ditches cannot be overstated. Um, the importance of the entire system and how it works together, the outfalls, the control structures, all of that stuff. It's a ridiculous system that I don't pretend to know enough about to, to go on about, but I think it's important that we understand that it's not just the swales, right? And that the water does have to percolate for a certain amount of time in order to feed our overall system. That being said, when we're looking at the current rates, the new positions that you all have proposed, are they tenable to continue to afford based on the current rates? Or based on these new positions, do you anticipate a need to raise the rates in the future, in the near future?
Yes, ma'am. So the new positions were outlined in the rate study that was, uh, approved last year.
Okay, so based on the current positions that are in this slot, these slides, these will not cause a further rate increase because they were already included in the previous rate study. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I, I can touch upon that. They, they were incorporated in our five-year outlook plan.
Right, introduce yourself to so, online.
Yes, uh, good morning, Carl Cody, Director of Stormwater Engineering. Yes, when we evaluated all the proposed equipment and staffing and timing of when they come on board, we incorporate that as, in conjunction with our capital improvement program and do a five-year outlook and then compare that to the rate study. And all these are in line with the rate study expense and revenue projections moving forward, so we're able to, to, um, incorporate all those items to address the swale issues. And we did, um, do some outsourced bidding, you know, the, the swale crew, the spot regrading that we're talking about. We did put that on the street and get bids to do the vac con, and I believe that was presented in the May study, and it was more economical to bring that in-house, um, as, rather than outsourcing. So for that particular new crew, we, we did do that cost comparison.
Thank you, Carl. And then my other, um, I, I guess, point that I would make to staff that I would like to see are regular KPIs. So we put a lot of money into stormwater. I want to see, and I think the residents deserve to see, the result. So if we could start to see some, um, I, I, I guess, KPIs is really the, no other way that I can put it, but what we had last year and the year before as far as results, how, how many swales we were able to cover, you know, I know that we've heard, oh, well, it's going to take, you know, three to five years to get to every single swale that we need to get to, but now we have this spot crew that we're working with. So what I would like to see is a comparison. What have we done in the past two years versus, you know, the next six months? Let's get a presentation that says, and it doesn't have to be a full-on presentation, but just something so that the taxpayers can see where their monies are going and where the rates from the, the utility study, where those monies are going and the ROI that we're getting for it. Because I think that we're going to see some vast improvements based on what you all have decided to do, and I think that it's really important that we show that. So if we could get, um, a presentation of that for some accountability, that would be fantastic. I have a similar question from the mayor on this, um, finance technician and the engineering technician. For the engineering technician, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like the need for this position is because of new construction. Is that largely because of new construction? Is that accurate?
I wouldn't say it's largely because of new construction. They do a lot of review of as-built's previous, especially with the infill lot issue that's, that's been ongoing for months now. We use that position to do a lot of the historical research for us and look back at construction. We use it for a lot of citizen complaints. So, um, they're, they're also, they, they design swale diagrams for if someone wants to replace the culvert on their driveway or replace their driveway. So they do a lot of additional work besides just new construction.
What would you say the split is? 60/40, 50/50?
I, I would probably say 50/50, 60/40.
Okay. Are we charging enough fees for plan reviews, permits, things like this, for positions that specifically look at new construction projects, whether it be final, uh, site plans, whatever it may be within the stormwater purview? Are we charging enough to cover those costs right now? Or have we done that analysis?
There was an analysis, I believe it was in 2021, if I'm not mistaken, uh, where the fee structure was reviewed. And there is a fee for plan reviews that, that is put, whether it's for the permit for driveway replacement or new construction.
Okay, 'cause I know in, um, community development, I believe, Mr. DiLorenzo, we just, we just increased some of our fees to make sure that we were kind of covering our costs. Have we done that type of thing lately in stormwater? Carl, you're shaking your head, or nodding your head, I should say.
I, I can handle that. Um, at the same ti, so, uh, what we did recently were the planning fees. Previous to the planning fees, we had a consultant, uh, evaluate, um, building permit fees and stormwater fees related to building permits. And, uh, that consultant did a review of both of those, and, uh, the fees were increased for, um, most things. Specifically on the stormwater side, I think all of them were increased. On building, there were some adjustments based on the intake of the permit or the inspection of the permit and adjusting the amount of time, um, you know, compared to the dollars to make sure that was more evenly distributed.
Okay. So I can just tell you from my standpoint, Mayor, I agree with your comment that we make policy up here. I will tell you that going forward, my policy is going to be, and it may only be for the next two years if I don't get re-elected, who knows? But, um, my policy will be that I want to know that if you all do come back to us, um, with another rate study asking for increased rates, those are monies that are coming directly from our residents. I will need to know that any costs that we are incurring because of new construction are covered by that new construction. No questions asked, that, I will not move on that. So I just, I, I tell you that now so that as you're doing an analysis moving forward, um, that can always kind of be in the back of our heads as we're looking at the finances of things, because new construction should be paying for itself. And I don't want to ever be asked to increase utility rates because of positions, even if they are 50/50 for new construction and things that are ongoing or not new construction, I want to know that it's paying for itself. So that's a policy that I think that I just want to share with you all, so that when we are talking about any types of utility fees in the future, that's, you know where I'm at.
So you're asking, you're, you're suggesting cost recovery on-
100% on new construction.
Okay, clear, so, so staff has that.
Are you talking single-family homes or like developments, or both?
Everything.
Everything?
Everything.
Because in a sense, isn't that what we have impact fees for?
That was, yeah.
Well, no, no, no.
So as a policy, what, I think the addition here, and I won't speak for you, I'll let you go, is, um, in terms of cost recovery, so, so for example, when there's a request for new positions, they have to be justified that the impact fees are in fact, the new, the additional impact fees are covering the costs, all of the costs of what those personnel would be.
Because impact fees can't cover personnel.
So I, I'm just, I, I just want to make sure I understand this. If somebody builds on a lot, builds a home, and we send people out to look at this stuff, we're gonna tack additional fees onto them, or how would you do that? I, I'm just confused.
No, 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 I'm not suggesting additional fees. What I'm saying is that, for instance, let's say that you, that a stormwater comes to us in two years and says, hey, we need to increase rates. I'm going to ask, whatever we're spending on personnel for new construction, is that covering itself right now with the per, with the fees, costs, things like that, that we charge these folks to come out and look at?
Okay.
These things? So that's going to be, that's my policy. I don't think that our current residents' stormwater rates should increase because of paying for personnel for new construction. That's my point. And, and impact fees can't pay for personnel.
So I'm just, I, what I'm, what I'm asking is, how would you collect those? How would you make that up?
Well, I'm just, I want to make sure that the current fees we charge are covering those.
And that would be up to staff to co, okay, so there's a, we're setting policy. Now, staff would come forward with a suggested way to execute such a policy, and then you'd decide, and if it works or doesn't make sense.
Just wanted to clarify where we were.
Or if it covers the groups that you're, that you're talking about, I think that's good. So I don't mean to ignore you on this side.
Yeah, don't worry. Are we saying that, because we get one shot at our impact fee collection, right? So when a house gets built, we get one shot at it, but are we saying that that construction in perpetuity needs to pay for itself? Just 'cause like if we're adding additional mileage to our swale maintenance program, we have to collect that through fees essentially, because we can't, we only get one shot at our impact fees, and those are, we also did impact fee rate studies, and we are charging the maximum allowable by state, uh, statute, but do you mean in perpetuity collecting those dollars? Wouldn't that be through fees? I'm just a little confused on what-
Or, or is it a function of, of the expense and the budget requests?
Sure, but are we talking about personnel services as in additional swale maintenance?
No, 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 so I'm, I'm just saying generally speaking. And, and I only pointed out this one position because it sounded to me when, uh, she was giving the description of what this position is, um, that a lot of it, that this new position is required because of the increase in new construction, permit reviews, things like that.
Okay.
So my, my point is just generally speaking, I want to make sure we're not subsidizing essentially new construction. That's what I want to ensure.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're-
And from an informational standpoint, if I may, if the request for personnel has something to do with a change in the, um, assignment, in other words, I think you're alluding to the fact that, uh, through infill, you may have additional work coming your way that is not something that you have had to do in the past. I mean, I kind of heard that. So there's a change in, in the workload, or, or the description of the workload is less. So I think we need to understand that, um, as a part of the process, yeah, at least in general terms, so that we can set policy correctly.
And then I just, sorry, I just have two more questions. I'm, I'm sorry. Um, are we cross-training the people that you listed, um, the, the new positions, the equipment operators, the swale specialists, are all these folks being cross-trained as well?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Last question, uh, the finance technician, is there some type of technology that your department could use or that the city could use at all, um, to lessen the burden on finance or to help efficiencies so that we are lowering personnel costs through the leverage of technology? Or have we looked at that?
Sounds like an ad for QuickBooks.
Could be.
I would have to refer over to the finance staff.
Good morning, Helena.
Good morning.
I have to lower this quite a bit. Uh, good morning, Helena Als, Financial Services Director. So part of- So part of what we did with the investment that council made a few years back on the ERP was to upgrade our system. We actually implemented a much better billing system within the same ERP that we had, and that had been a goal for a few years for finance. So we're very grateful for that. We've just run into the point where the workload is too large for us to handle. We had great efficiencies that were created with the ERP, and we reduced a lot of our administrative work, right? Our approvals went online. We were able to go electronic with a lot of our processes. But it's just gotten to the point where our staffing is not able to handle the workload. We've done those steps. We went, we rewrote, we even brought the ordinance for procurement back to council, right, to reduce where we could for administration. And, you know, we're not able to do that anymore. That position has been on the back burner for a while, and it waited for the rate study, and it was incorporated through working with Carl and his group to be able to be funded.
And I'm sorry, just help me, I apologize. The acronym ERP is?
Oh, our Enterprise Resource Software.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So my comment, I agree with Councilwoman Ponteiri on the issues that she's addressed. And also, I'm going to back up a little bit on the swell maintenance. I've been driving around the city of Palm Coast a lot, and I have been paying attention to the swales. And there does seem to be an improvement in the swell maintenance. And also, I'm getting a lot less calls and complaints about swales. So I just want to say thank you for that. However, there is one that I'm going to make a call on that is right directly in my area, and there's just water sitting in that swell all the time. So you'll be hearing from me on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Yep. Just one more note. In the future, I think, while we have the Stormwater, especially this presentation, in the future, potentially talk about the level of service that we were trying to accomplish with the additional personnel, just so for the public's, you know, purview, we can have that discussion kind of summarized, because a lot of consensus goes into getting us to the point where we are now. So just maybe like a TLDR overview of these additional positions and what additional level of service they're going to provide. But otherwise, thank you very much for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
I just have one more question. You said for the, also for that position, the engineering tech, that we were not, the work was so much that we weren't able to meet deadlines or something to that effect. And I might be misstating, so if you could explain that. Are we at all falling behind any type of statutory deadlines, you know, anything that legally we have to approve by a certain time without this position?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
If I may, I'd like to get a nod from Helena, because the budget cycle, which I don't know that this directly affects, but is very tight in terms of hitting October. So there's no, none of this reflects our ability to achieve the state-required budget cycle timing.
I'm sorry. Was the question relating to the engineering position?
Well, you had mentioned that folks are, I don't want to use the word overwhelmed. I don't know if you used that word. But there was too much coming their way. I just want to make sure, like the councilwoman suggested, we're on a very tight and set budget process timeline mandated by the state. So the question is, does that amount of work negatively affect their ability to achieve that deadline?
So not at this point. That position is billing, so handling day-to-day operational transactions. It would affect our ability to make sure that we're collecting the proper revenue on time. So eventually, you know, if you have too much of a workload on staff, eventually mistakes will happen. So at some point, it could affect our operations.
And I'm sorry, I wasn't talking about the finance position. I was talking about the other position. I just want to make sure that's clear. So is it the same response? We're not missing any statutory or deadlines imposed by our own code, are we?
No, we are not.
So this is more of a level of service?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. DiLorenzo.
Mayor, City Council, there was a new bill that was passed that reduces the timelines for building permits. I would say that we are still performing at under that, but it will be a consideration as we move forward.
So, Mr. DiLorenzo, you opened the door, so I have to ask a question. I had made a request some time ago, at some point in time when it's possible. I'd like to understand from beginning to end, the timeline for permits being requested and granted versus other jurisdictions, other municipalities, other counties, whatever data you can find, so that I know, or we know where we stand in relation to others, let's say, within the region. I think that would be more appropriate, okay? So that's a request.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ladies?
Couple more.
Please. And thank you for helping us with the questions. Sorry to interrupt your flow.
No worries. Next one we're going to talk about is non-departmental. Non-departmental expenses, the major change in this account is due to the increased debt service. We talked about the loan that we're getting for equipment in this fiscal year, and then the loan fees for the capital project loan in FY25. So fleet equipment for Stormwater, where they call it a whacker packer, but it is a machine that combats dirt primarily used by our pipe replacement crew. What that does is helps to ensure when we dig the road up and we replace a section of pipe, we can pack that dirt properly so that when we repave, we don't wind up with a dip in the road. This unit replaces one that was not on our fleet replacement schedule. We're also asking for a trash pump. This portable pump is trailer-mounted, would assist us with removing water from our construction sites, our wear repairs when we need to do wear repairs and move water, and other areas where we may need to move large amounts of stormwater to prevent flooding or assist with repairs in our system. There is also a pickup truck for the additional swell specialist, and a dump trailer that we're asking for to be used by all the crews, where the jobs don't necessarily require the use of a large dump truck. The fleet replacement items are vehicles and equipment that were slated to be replaced due to age and/or wear. And then we have one large piece of heavy equipment, the Menzy that we use in our ditches, that is scheduled to be replaced next year. Any further questions for me?
Really quickly on the white fleet, do we have some type of contract with Ford that allows us to get kind of a cut in our discount in what we pay for these because we do buy from them?
So it's my understanding that we purchase most of our fleet from the state contract, but I'm sure the Public Works Director will be addressing that for you.
Thank you.
Questions from City Council members on this part of the presentation? Mr. Cody, did you have a...
Piggybacking vehicles for the win.
Thank you, Lynn. Director Carl Cody will now present the Stormwater capital budget.
Yes, good morning, Carl Cody, Director of Stormwater Engineering. So I'm going to cover the Stormwater capital portion of the Stormwater Engineering budget. So as you can see, the five-year revenues include the approved phased rate increase that was adopted as part of the rate study. There's also existing grants and ARPA funding, as well as loans for equipment and capital projects. The other revenues are charges for services associated with the building permits that Lynn had covered previously. So the five-year capital improvement plan includes various projects related to rehabilitation of the existing infrastructure, such as pipe replacements and pipelining, expanding storewater storage, such as the London Waterway project, wear control structural replacements, such as P1 that's primarily funded with a state appropriation, and various capacity improvement projects, such as ditch rehabilitation and covert pipe replacements with larger sizes, such as the Colbert Lane covert replacement project. Some of the major projects in FY25 include completion of the London Waterway project, the P1 rear replacement, K-section capacity improvement project, Colbert Lane capacity improvement with the covert upsizing, pipelining, and freshwater canal dredging. Any questions on some of these related Stormwater projects?
None at this time, Carl.
Okay. Thank you, Carl. Director Amanda Reese will present the water and wastewater budgets.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Amanda Reese, Utility Director. I'll be presenting the utility budget today. The utility staff play an important role in the community by providing an essential service. A well-managed water supply advances the quality of life for all in Palm Coast and our extended service area. We will start with the utility operating fund. In this slide, we see that the utility is over a $60 million yearly operation. Our charges for services, our revenues, are running roughly $7.1 million beyond the adopted FY24 value. You are starting to see the revenues from adding new customers to the system. The total expenditures have increased approximately $10 million since last year, and the detail of those expenditures will be covered in upcoming slides. Key takeaways from today's presentation are the utility is growing, and much of what we hope to accomplish is going to be impacted by today's costs and support for resources and change. The Stormwater and water wastewater infrastructure industry are experiencing a major squeeze. The cost of labor, materials, and equipment have all risen due to inflation and other factors. Wastewater pumping is up first. Most of the percentage change increase is related to the increase of parts and materials for the wastewater pumping division. The major driver of this maintenance is aging infrastructure. You will also see the internal, the allocations, the approximately 292-602 is related to fleet, and we will get to that in later slides. The wastewater collection for FY2025 will be allocating one additional staff member to focus on after-hour emergencies and service calls. The big-ticket item in operating expenditures is the replacement of CCTV equipment.
Can I stop you just for a second?
Sure.
Ask you a question. How many after-order, after-hour calls do we get right now?
I do not know the number, but I can get that for you. Those calls specifically in that category are from pep calls.
Okay.
And they're increasing due to the increased pep tanks we're putting into the field.
Yeah, if we could get, so, and let me ask you this on that position. What percentage of their time is spent on other service calls versus after-hour calls? If we could just get that breakdown. I just find it hard to believe, and I'm sorry to say this, but that we need a whole new position for after-hour pep tank calls. But again, I don't know what that looks like. So if that information could just be provided to educate us, that would be really helpful.
Sure.
Because I don't know, like I said, I don't know what that looks like. I don't, I don't get, I'm not on the receiving end of those. But we do have to look at that budget. So if you could just provide that information, that would be...
Sure, I'll be happy to provide those.
Thank you.
Waste Water Treatment Plant One. The bulk of the budget increases for Waste Water Treatment Plant One are in contractual services and chemicals. The existing sledge hauling increased almost 100% over last year's contractual agreement. Waste Water Treatment Plant One is near capacity, and with increased flows come increased operating costs related to chemicals, electricity, and hauling. The percentage change overall is 26.6% at Waste Water Treatment Plant One. Waste Water Treatment Plant Two. As in the case with Waste Water Treatment Plant One, the bulk of the increase in the 2025 budget is in contractual services, chemicals, and electricity. While Waste Water Treatment Plant One is facing capacity issues, Waste Water Treatment Plant Two is in the expansion phase that will double the capacity by late 2024. While this expansion is needed for current and future growth, staff is also looking to divert flow from Waste Water Treatment Plant One to give some relief and free up capacity at Waste Water Treatment Plant One to serve future residential and commercial growth. Adding new capacity and new process equipment will increase operating costs in chemicals and power. All of these items make up the 34.2% change. Water Treatment Plant One has a small increase here of 2.3%. Those were evened out by the reduction in personnel services of approximately 50,000, which was attributed to the retirement of a Class A licensed operator three, and this position was filled by trainees. So in this budget is shown as a reduction in personnel services. The operating expenditures were increased based on historical averages for chemicals, sledge disposal, maintenance, and repair. Water Treatment Plant Number Two. You will see a 10% change overall at Water Treatment Plant Number Two. Operating expenditures increase is related to the capabilities of this plant to treat the largest volume of water of the three plants. The utility has hit record highs in water usage, and Plant Number Two's well field is the healthiest producer of the three. Water Treatment Plant Number Three. Plant Number Three has an addition of a liquid oxygen technology to enhance treatment in the operating expenditures, along with the historical averages for increase in chemicals, maintenance, and repairs that make up the 10.4% increase overall from last fiscal year.
If I may, you mentioned that Plant Number Two has the healthiest, I think, well field, you used another term. Is that because of the geology of that particular area, or what's, why is it better?
It's that those particular wells that are diverted to Plant Two are producing the most water at this time.
Because...
For a variety of reasons. The wells go under rehabs and things, because when a well comes online, it may be producing X amount of water. And then over time, it can produce less based off of maintenance, rehab, different items. And so that Number Two is producing the most water, and the wells that are connected to specifically come into Plant Two.
Okay, so it has to do with the...
Number of wells?
The maintenance of the equipment as well as the location?
As well as those wells' production rates over time. So when wells are installed in the field, they can produce what I would call maybe the highest amount they would ever. And then over time, based off of, you know, maintenance, rehabs, and geography of the area, they could decrease.
Because, and the reason for my question was, it's my understanding over time that we are challenged because of our geographical location with the, and accessibility is probably not the right word, with the production of water because of the way the aquifer is placed and what we have to go through to get to it, and all of that.
I think that is an issue, but to expand on it with more, you know...
No, no, okay, I understand. You answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're, on water quality, you can see there, there is a reduction here. That is mainly attributable to, we sharpened our pencil on overtime for water quality. Historically, we had not used, you know, quite what was adjusted to that. So we sharpened our pencil and reduced overtime. But the majority of the decrease, you see approximately 100,000, is related to the reduction in personnel services from FY24 to 25, related to retirements and employee specifications for benefits. The Water Distribution Division plays an essential role providing support as we expand the system. The largest part of this increase is the 150,000 in capital outlay, which represents the additional meters and supplies that need to be purchased to meet increasing demand for connectivity. FY2025 personnel physician requests fully burdened in the addition of two staff members for the meter division at approximately $59,000 each. These technicians will aid in new installs and help to decrease the backlog of meter retirements. Administration, the, is, the percentage change is 6.4%. And then here, the major increase is due to the $50,000 in operating expense to cover a update of the existing Customer service expenditures will see an overall 6.6% increase. This, the majority of this increase is in salaries and benefits, but also adds $45,000 in Amazon but also adds $45,000 in Amazon Connect enhancements, specifically tied to number six of the Strategic Action Plan to consistently ensure an excellent customer service response. Utility Finance. There is an overall change of approximately $160,000 in utility finance, which is the largest portion of the change, and is a transfer of a position from utility administration that will be a new accountant role in utility finance. This position will help the utility as we experience rapid growth, combat growing pains, and outline fiscal plans to achieve the best output with the resources that we have. Construction Management and Engineering. The highlight in the Construction Management and Engineering Budget is a request for Utility Engineer One position, fully burdened with a cost of approximately $115,000. The utility engineer will aid in the support of the increased utility projects related to aging infrastructure and new capacity. The next slide we're seeing is Non-Terminal. The overall change is 27.8%. The largest part of the increase is its inter-fund transfers that are related to the transfer of fund balance to the Utility Capital Projects Fund for project needs. This accounts for approximately 5.6 million of that change.
What projects are those specifically?
Uh, capital projects will be covered by Carl next, and he can expand on the, the project schedule and the, the project descriptions.
Okay, yeah, Carl, if you could just, I would like to know specifically what the 5.7 inter-fund transfer, not now, but whenever you're doing the capital project portion, if you could just hit on that. Thank you.
Thanks. There is also the, the pilot paid in lieu of taxes represent, represented into the inter-fund transfers. We end the utilities section of the operating budget with fleet equipment. New equipment is at little over $200,000, and the replacement of fleet is approximately 1.5 million. Some of the new equipment will be used by both water and the wastewater departments. The valve exerciser is for the additional equipment to maintain valves on the system, and the two terminal tractors are for sludge removal, moving, moving sludge from wastewater treatment plant one and two. And the cargo mate trailer is mostly used in wastewater collections, but they can also use that in the water section. And, uh, part, the big portion of replacements is the cost of the, the replacement cost of that CCTV equipment in replacements.
Question at this point, anybody?
I have no.
I have a
I have one, go ahead.
You have a few. The meter technicians.
Yes.
What's the cost recovery on that? Because those are for new, mostly for new meters.
Well, they're not also for new meters. There is a backlog of meter retirements that need to be changed out that will provide residents with accurate reads for their bills. So as meters, um, and, uh, they're, they're behind.
I just got mine replaced last week.
Yes. So, so that, that affects, uh, how, how the billing i- is done, because when they're not taken out of the field, and a lot of communities have that issue. There's usually a backlog of retirements, but at the point, it can get out of hand, and we want to make sure that it doesn't.
Sure, and I can appreciate that. So that's good to know. What about cost recovery for new meters? Do we have anything in place that helps us recover those costs?
For?
For, so when it, when a new house comes online?
Sure.
This meter technician goes out specifically for that new construction, correct?
Of course.
Is there any cost recovery built into how we collect any fees, permits, et cetera, to help with this type of cost?
I mean, there would be permits for new meters that would, would, uh, charge the customer for the install of that new meter.
Okay, and do we know what that cost recovery looks like?
Uh, I can present that specifically if we want to draw that out and, and show, you know, retirements to new installs. I, I'm happy to do that.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
And I, you know what? I jumped right into asking you questions without welcoming you on board. This is the way I welcome people, I guess.
We called her last time at the podium, so we're good.
Yeah, no, I, I, uh, welcome to the team, and I'm sorry that I just jumped right in. I tend to do that, and I apologize.
While you're on the meters, if I may, now, I certainly understand the installation of a meter, but are there any costs here associated with, um, reading or, or knowing the, um, um, the function of the meter after it's installed? And, and the reason for my question is, in my mind, why, with all of today's technology, like Ring as an example and everything else, why isn't all of this electronically done as opposed to having labor having to actually go out to sites? I'm not talking about installation or replacement, of course, physically you have to do that, but are any of these numbers related to monitoring or making sure that the meter is operating or reading the meter data?
He stole my automated metering infrastructure question.
I, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
So I'll be happy to review that with the staff. I haven't gotten to that level
Okay.
of, of, uh, fine detail. However, I will say this, your older meters that need retirement in the field do not have new technology, and so that's why it's so important to get a handle on the replacement of them so that we can utilize the newest technology.
Okay, and Councilwoman Kluft, if you want to be more eloquent or fluent in the question, go ahead.
No, the automated metering infrastructure, I know that my new meter, it has an NFC near field contact point, like right on top, so you can just use the wand to ding it. And in the past, we've upgraded from the older style to the new automated metering infrastructure, and I was just piggybacking on, uh, the mayor's point. Also, if we could just reiterate that some of the additional expenses that we're now incurring are because of the old bones that we have in our system. Basically, you know, this stuff is starting to get to 60 years old, and it requires a little bit more maintenance, and I think that's important for our residents to understand as well, that some of this cost, when you have a new system, everything is fine. But now that we're starting to come to the sunset and the end of life of some of this underground infrastructure, we have to pay a little bit more, just like our bodies, to keep them in the same level of service.
That is correct.
Mayor?
Councilwoman?
No, go ahead.
Vice Mayor, question?
I, I did not have a question, but I do want to just, I think we should keep in mind, and, and I understand what Councilwoman Pontieri is saying about recovering some of this cost, but when someone takes an empty lot and builds a home on it, we begin to collect a lot more taxes on that home. And I don't want to see us just increase the cost of, of homeownership, of building, because any, anybody who builds a home, any contractor, is going to pass that cost along to the buyer of that home, which will increase the price of it. But I think we should keep in mind, we take an empty lot that pays hardly any taxes, and we put, you know, a $500,000, $600,000, whatever amount home on it, and that person comes in, especially if that person is from out of state and doesn't have homestead, they're going to be paying a lot of taxes to us, so I think that's a good thing to keep in mind.
For the first two years, sure.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
And for eternity afterwards, because that house will be there instead of an empty lot. We have about 7,000 empty lots out there. You know, if we fill them all up, which eventually we will, we will collect a lot more taxes.
So I, I
So it's kind of a bigger picture view, and I just, I'm not criticizing what you're saying. I just want us to keep that in mind.
Sure, and I, I can appreciate that. I guess, you know, my overall policy, if, if it hasn't been abundantly clear in the first two years that I've been in the seat, construction should pay for itself. So this is just along that line of thinking, along that policy, new construction should pay for itself. Now, I understand that things could pass through to the buyer, but that's market-driven, and that's ultimately up to the developer and the builder. Whether or not they want to sell a house for a certain amount of money and pass down those fees or, um, subsume those fees is ultimately up to them. They want to pass it down, it's going to increase the cost of their house, and whether or not somebody wants to pay for that is up to the market, and will be up to that person. But I don't think that our current residents should be paying for personnel that's required because of increased construction. So that's just my overall policy. Now, I, my, my question though was, I just want to see what the numbers are. I'm not saying that we should automatically raise anything, but I don't know what that looks like. So I think that, you know, just from an edification standpoint, that's worthwhile information for us to have.
Right, and, and I, I understand you want to see what the numbers are, but to me, I just, putting this on the table, you know, we, we, thinking long-term, putting that house there gets more bang for our buck than collecting a few extra dollars for, for a water meter or something else. And, and that adds to our pot a lot more significantly than if those homes are not built on those lots. So I, I think we have to look at the whole big picture is what I'm saying.
Sure, yeah, no, I can appreciate that. Um, thank you. The, the other question I had was regarding, again, KPIs. So you said that, um, inter-fund transfers were for the Amazon customer service, I guess, improvement that we're looking at. Again, can we see, um, maybe in six months or so? What, or I guess six months after this, money starts to be expended, right? Because this is for the upcoming budget. What's the ROI on that? So are we actually seeing an improvement to customer service? Are we responding to more calls, or is it, are we responding more quickly? So I would like to see again, how is this money actually returning an investment to our taxpayers?
Sure, I can provide that too.
Okay, you, so, so you're okay, because the KPI is a little bit, not mysterious, but, um, ethereal in terms of, of how you, so we're going to get more calls because there's more folks. I'm just trying to make sure that your KPI is, is giving you the measurement of your KPI, is giving you the data that you're looking for.
Yeah, I think percentages.
Yeah, okay, all right. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Mayor? May I just step in for one second here?
Sure.
Councilmember Pontieri, you were asking about the fees for meters and installations. So I'll just remind City Council that, um, during the, the rate study discussion, that's a, that's three parts, right? It's the, uh, it's the rates themselves that are charged, right, uh, to the customer. There's a fee portion of it, which includes installation and miscellaneous fees, and then there's the CIAC or impact fees. You approved a change to the CIAC fees, but you did not approve a change to the other two. If you would like us to bring the installation and miscellaneous fee schedule forward that was, um, that was, um, conducted as part of the rate study but separate from the rates, we could bring that forward to you.
So that is, that initial installation fee, does that go on a bill, or is it paid for as a part of the impact? How, how is?
It's, it goes on the building permit.
Okay. No, I don't have any desire to raise fees on the residence, so we don't need to bring that back. Um, I was happy with just raising the impact fees.
Okay, I wasn't sure. It's, there's, you know, the, the, you had a conversation about the, the cost recover of the meter, and that's included in that phase of the fee schedule.
City Council has indicated that, no, thank you for the offer, but, uh, for the moment, we'll, we'll make that request when it, uh, when City Council has a mind to do that.
But thank you for that clarification.
Clear? Vice Mayor, got it?
Got it.
Okay, yeah, okay. Just want to make sure everybody's on board with that. Okay, um, Carl, are you conducting the next presentation?
Yeah, I'm going to go through the utility capital projects that the engineering department oversees. So the revenues for utility capital are comprised of impact fees, which are increased annually per City Council's approval of the increased capacity charges, transfers from utility rates to fund R and R projects, and there are several grant and ARPA-funded projects, state appropriation for purchase of land for a rip site for wastewater treatment plant two, and needed loans to fund capacity in R and R projects. There are several major critical projects in the five-year CIP plan, which we'll be covering in more detail in some of the upcoming slides. So that inter-fund transfer was two and a half million for R and R projects, and then it was three and a half million for capital, to fund some of the capital projects. Okay, so this is the, the water capital project fund expenditures, and you can see there are various improvements. They include either rehab and renovation of some of our existing facilities. They also include a lot of capacity or improvements to existing plants. We have new plant expansions identified in here, and we have new wells as well as water main extensions. And we'll, we'll go through some of the highlights in some future slides identifying some of the specific major projects.
Councilwoman, is this kind of a list of projects that you were trying to get to, or?
Well, not this specific list, but I was trying to see what, what, what the actual transfer from utilities was dedicated towards in this list, yes.
I'm not sure if those three and a half million was identified to a specific, a project or not. I'd have to go back and review that and get back, get, get to you specifically.
My question, is it broadly distributed?
Yeah, that's what I'm curious about.
Correct. I'll have to research that and get back to you.
Jason, you got that?
Because, and the reason for that is because that obviously goes into the utility studies, right? So we need to know, I think, what projects those are coming from to see in the future, just when we're looking at it and evaluating it. Obviously, we're not looking to increase fees at this time, because we decline to do that, but I think that it's important to know just for posterity, wink, wink on the end, what we're looking at as far as those inter-fund transfers are in the future.
Right, and those would have been to fund non-capacity, a non-capacity project, because currently, the way that this, the system or the, the five-year CIP plan is laid out, it's the capacity fees are covering those capacity improvement projects. So it would be for a non-capacity project.
Thank you.
So this is our wastewater, um, project listing. You, you'll note it's very similar to water, you know, main, R and R and our plants and our system, pump stations, lift stations. We do have some forced main extensions as well, and, uh, as well as reclaimed water. So this here is a, an overall map, and it shows two boundaries. The, the green one is actually the Palm Coast Water Service Area, which includes area outside of the Palm Coast city limit, which are, is shown in that dashed magenta line. You'll see that there's, um, blue stars on the map, and those are critical well sites, and then the, the dark blue or the, the blue lines themselves or blotched areas are critical capital, capital projects in, in fiscal year '25.
And Carl, just for information, who actually sets the boundaries for the water service area? How does, is that, is that, uh?
I'm, I believe that was done years ago in the early 2000s as part of the, the, you know, so-called water wars. I, I don't remember what exactly referred to, but it, it was through an agreement or?
So my question is, and I don't know if you would know the answer, but does this, is this something that is also considered in the Imagine 2050 Comprehensive Plan?
Yes, sir, it is. It, this is, um, the service area was created as part of the 2007 utility settlement agreement.
Got it. Understood. Thank you.
So we're going to go through various projects. We're going to start with water. So we have water treatment facility number one, and this is located on Palm Coast Parkway, just west of Belter, right by the library. So our, what we are proposing to move forward with or include in the budget for '25 is a pilot study for three capacity and treatment improvement options. So the benefit, you know, of moving forward with this is to improve treatment efficiency, water quality, and increase capacity. So it's a $1 million budget. We're currently negotiating the scope and fee. I believe that has been finalized, and it will be coming to council. And then we have a project duration of 12 months. So this will identify based on those three options, which one's going to provide the biggest bang for the buck, and whether we proceed with one or more of those options moving forward. So Water Treatment Facility Two, we have a project for lime sludge thickener and 2 million ground store, water storage tank. So there's some benefits to this to increase the lime sludge treatment process to accommodate additional water production that the plant has seen, as well as to increase needed water storage. And that, um, addresses also helping to maintain the water pressure that we've seen lately.
Just a question. So I see the term lime, lime, lime sludge treatment process. Is that an old-fashioned process that has followed us into the present? Or is that something that is new and okay to push forward and spend money on for the future?
Yeah.
And maybe I'm asking the wrong?
Right. Um, I'll just speak very generically, because that's about as far as I can go.
Yeah.
Um, our treatment plants have different treatment processes.
Right.
This one, as far as I know, is still a common practice in what should be utilized at this particular
All right, and I'll ask for more detail at another time. Thank you.
Yes. So, uh, the budget on this one is 7.5 million. Bids just came in on this project, and contract duration is 300 days. So that's once they start construction. So this isn't 300 days from today, it's going to be once they actually start work and, and begin work. begin work. So, water treatment plant three, we, is a design of a brackish well connectivity in preliminary design analysis, facility, facility expansion from 3 million gallons per day to four and a half, or 6 million gallons per day. So, this is strictly related to capacity expansion. Uh, the phase one study slash design is just under a million dollars, and it's a 12-month process. So, the, the amount of expansion is going to be dependent on those brackish wells that we plan to bring online, and looking at what's the most cost beneficial, to do two trains or one train expansion? Are we going to do a separate train just for brackish wells? How much can we mix the water, um, with fresh water, and we have a mixed water source supply? So, there's going to be doing that whole evaluation process throughout the design and study period, and then identifying how, as a city, we should be moving forward with that expansion. So, wells and wellfields, we have several wells coming, um, onboard that have been underway for a while. We have new wells SW1 and SW2. These are located in close proximity to water treatment plant one, that we were talking about at the beginning there. Um, it's going to provide capacity expansion of 280,000 gallons per day. Construction phase is around a million dollars, and design is 99% complete, and we'll be going up to construction bid here shortly. In the construction duration, once we begin, construction will be about nine months. So, you know, just as an aside, you know, if we're only looking at straight residential units and not commercial and other, and whatnot, these wells will help, you know, service about 1,400 homes if we're just looking at a residential home. So, we have additional wells. This is SW147, which is at Commerce Drive in Pine Lakes Parkway, just, you know, south of Palm Coast Parkway, and SW148, which is near the, the new Goodwill site along Palm Coast Parkway eastbound, is a little bit east of Commerce Drive. So, the addition of these two wells will add about 500,000 gallons per day, and the construction phase is budgeted at 1.85 million dollars. The schedule, we have wells to be drilled within six months. We're negotiating the scope and fee for the design and equipping of those wells, and the total project duration is about 18 months. This will serve roughly 2,300 homes. So, then we have brackish wells exploration. This is a study. So, the, the benefit is for capacity expansion, you know, of to be determined gallons per day, because some of the, the beginning stages is we, there are five well sites that have been identified, and we will need to do some test wells to identify what that flow is going to be, and it's a year-long analysis that has to be conducted on brackish wells before we can move forward. So, as part of that year-long analysis and the study of these wells, we'll be able to determine, you know, what, what the production would be in the future, and if we develop all five wells or not. Um, so, the test well and study is 1.25 million dollars, and the project duration is about 21 months. So, then we have water main extensions. So, we have the, the Sesame Boulevard, Old Kings Road, SR100 Loop. So, this is, uh, capacity expansion. This is, uh, construction phase is $4 million. Bids have been received, and the construction duration is about 12 months.
That, that's the Old Kings, uh, south portion, right?
This is Old Kings South. This is a?
Uh, south, when I say south, that's a misnomer. So, starting where and anywhere? Starting where?
It starts at State Road 100 and goes south to, um, to Steeplechase Trail. So, it's down almost to Eagle Lakes, basically.
All the way south on the other side, okay.
All the way south. This is part of the, the settlement agreement, that the city would provide water to this area. Some of it's within the city, and some of it's slightly out. The, the portion that's within the county limit, um, would be, would also be funded by the city. There's a portion of wastewater here we'll get to that is funded by FGUA.
That would help with a bunch of stuff with that other water facility down there, right?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
There's another water facility down there that's not?
Yeah, we have waste, we have water treatment plant two, which is on Citation between Beltair and Seminole Woods with Citation Extension. It'll be on that road. This is going to connect up to that. Our water system is fully connected between the three plants, so they can distribute water between all three of those.
Oh, gotcha. I meant, wasn't there an, uh, packing plant or something down by Beulah or something like that? Yeah, that they're gonna?
They have a well and a, a packaged plant for wastewater.
Cool.
So, are, are we competing with, uh, I don't know how to pronounce it, Fugua, in terms of delivery of, of water, or not?
No. Um, City Council entered into an agreement with FGUA several years ago, and this is the line to support that agreement.
So, okay, alright, that's what it is. Okay.
So, we have water main extensions, so, um, you can see that's the wrong figure on this particular slide for some reason. Um, so we'll just, let's get to the next one. Um, utility capital projects, wastewater treatment plant two. This is on PV grade, just west of US1. So, this is a project that's under construction, and it's going to expand the plant from 2 million gallons per day to 4 million gallons per day. Uh, it's capacity expansion. The budget, or the, for the construction phase is around $30 million. Construction is 80% complete, and we are looking, are tentatively scheduled for activation of that expansion in March of 2025.
So, City Manager, obviously, at some point in time, you'll connect the dots between this and economic development in terms of, uh, what opportunity this presents itself, so we can let everybody know what this investment is intended for?
Yes, sir, and during the comp, comp plan policy, um, discussion that's coming up during the, in the economic development section, is a part about infrastructure.
Thank you.
So, wastewater treatment plant number three. So, this is down on Old Kings Road South, that we were just looking at on the overall map. Um, we have a pre-designed feasibility study phase. This is the site that Fugua has a package plant on as part of that agreement that the city entered into. Once the force mains extended and connected to our system, that package plant will go away, and the land will be turned over to the city for a future wastewater treatment plant. So, we are analyzing, you know, in terms of cost effectiveness, where the next expansion for our wastewater treatment plant should be, should be an existing plant, this new plant. So, this is looking at that particular site, looking at flows and connectivity, as what that, that analysis would be in terms of when we would bring this forward in our future planning. So, we have dollars in here for the pre-designed feasibility study. It's for capacity expansion. We budgeted $500,000 for the pre-design in, in that feasibility study. We're currently negotiating a scope and fee, and the duration would be about nine months. So, wastewater pump and lift stations. We have pump station PS13-1. This is right by the library. It's an operational improvement to redirect flow from wastewater treatment plant one to wastewater treatment plant two. This is in line with the opening of that new capacity expansion at plant two, and knowing plant one is, is at its max capacity now, so this will push more flows, some flows over to that, that plant. So, it would free up some ability in water plant one, wastewater plant one. We have $500,000 budgeted for those improvements, and it would be, duration is about six months.
And the, the, the future change in use of the land in close proximity, which is now, I guess, occupied by the library, and I guess would be county-owned, does that have any effect on whatever plans you have for this plant?
It, it would, it would have minimal effect. We just, um, could you repeat the question?
So, the plant is right next to the county land, which we assume is going to undergo perhaps a change in use in the future. I'm just asking, is there any, is it going to affect your plans? We don't know what the use is, obviously, but, um, you're aware of it, and you're not expecting any challenge because of that?
Right. I don't think it's large enough that would have a, a major impact to our overall system.
Okay.
The library will have 3,000 PSI hand water, though, so.
So, we have forced main extensions. This is, um, also that, that loop from Sesame Boulevard, Old Kings Road to State Road 100. It's capacity expansion and extension to the future wastewater treatment plant three site. Construction phase is just over $6 million. Bids have been received, and construction is about 12 months. A portion of this is being funded by Fugua. That's in addition to the $6 million of the, the project cost. We also have Oakings Road to wastewater treatment plant one, forced main extension. This is a capacity expansion. Construction phase is, has been budgeted at $6.2 million. Uh, bids were just received, and they, they did come in under budget, and our duration is about 18 months. So, that wraps up some of the major projects that we got planned in '25. Some of them will result in the need for loans in the future to actually construct some of those planned capacity improvement projects, especially those plant expansions that are very large dollars.
Questions from City Council members?
I have none.
Just a general comment. Um, when I look at our stormwater and utility needs, it's abundantly clear to me that I, I think that with our new grants administrator, that needs to be the focus. Water, utility, stormwater. Um, we really need to bring in some state dollars as much as possible, so I like to see that prioritized. Um, my other comment is, it looks, obviously, these projects, you say they're capacity expansion, and they're looking very far into the future, which I commend. If we have to take out loans, and we don't yet have the impact fees, are we able to yet borrow against those impact fees so that these loans can be paid back with impact fees that are collected in the future?
The, a portion, uh, there's going to be a limitation on how much of projected capacity fees are available to cover the loan cost. That is something that we are looking into and are asking our financial consultants, uh, that, that question, you know, how much, what's reasonable out there that someone would actually issue loans for, you know, what's typical. So, that's part of our, um, questions that we have that we're looking into.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And I would underscore your prioritization for the grant, uh, effort, knowing that we're going to have to get a very fine mesh net to catch those dollars that are flying down 95, uh, to the south.
I do have some updates to some grants. You know, we did, uh, recently hear that our $10 million pipelining grant that we had sought, um, was not awarded. Um, we, we did learn that no one in Florida received any of that funding, um, but that was, would have been a big help to, you know, $10 million in pipelining. But, we did apply three, there was two appropriations we didn't get funded for in this, the wastewater treatment plant expansion, and then we had the, the rip site, but that, the, we couldn't apply for the, the grant. It didn't fit the parameters of the grant, but we added two reclaimed water projects, Indian Trails, converting that over from wells to reclaim, and then extending reclaim down Oakings Road South as part of that project we were seeking a grant for. So, we did recently submit three grants for some of those major utility projects.
Perfect. I appreciate your efforts.
And again, on the grant aspect, I would like to see some other options besides hiring a person. I would like to see the pros, the cons, the cost of contracting out to one of these businesses that actually do this for a living, because it may be more, we may, we may get more grants if we're using people that do this all the time, that know how to navigate those waters in Tallahassee and DC. So, I would like to see some options other than just us hiring a person to do this job. I realize we pay more when we get a grant, when we use these businesses, but if we get more grants, it may be worth it. I don't have the numbers, but I think this council needs to have those options before us.
So, City Manager, is that, is it, I guess you'd come forward with the potential RFP for a firm that is, what would you call that kind of business? Somebody that, that you pay?
Ambulance chasers, I would call them, but, as long as they catch them.
That you, you, you pay on the success of the grant, uh, reception?
We can do some research into grant consultants.
Yep.
And see how that operation works.
Grant consultants that are paid on their success?
And Carl could probably, yes, sir. Um, Carl could probably fill in that, you know, our, when we, um, go out to bid, our, and our consulting firms, they do this for us as well, uh, for his big capital projects.
Yeah, yeah, part of the scope and fee is, when they're doing the design work or a study, we ask them to identify particular grants out there that we could seek, and that would fit parameters and score well on these grants. So, they do assist us with some of those grant, um, options that are out there.
And my question, just so I understand from City Council, so what you're feeling about this is, so, we will, uh, negotiate a new contract for lobbyist, correct? I mean, that's part of a future agenda. And my question to City Council is, I would assume that, that what you just said would be a part of that responsibility as well.
That would be fabulous. I just want to see what the options are. I don't know.
I just want to make sure that we?
I don't know the best route to go on this, um, without that information.
Yeah, I assume that lobbyists, our, our experience with lobbyists, and Nick, you go back further, that they would also prioritize this in the work that they do as well.
Sure, absolutely. I concur, but occasionally you do have a governor that, you know, the prioritization doesn't exactly align with everything, so.
Okay, alright. Carl, thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl. Director Matt Mansell will now present the Collections and Sanitation Fund budget.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Matt Mansell, your Director of Public Works.
Good morning, Matt.
Morning. Uh, so, just to give you a brief overview, the Collection and Sanitation Fund, uh, increase is projected at 12.2% this year. That's mostly due to growth in number of our, um, collection accounts. So, we're going into our second year of the contract with FCC for our residential, um, commercial hauling, or, excuse me, our residential hauling. Uh, last year, we started one July with 42,186 residential accounts, and as of one July 2024, we are sitting around 44,485 accounts. Uh, this also includes our annual CPI adjustment. So, each year, we take a look at the, uh, the, the published CPI rates, uh, and our contract currently has a cap of no more than 4%, uh, but based on the actual, um, CPI calculation, uh, this year, we are projecting a 3.75% uh, CPI adjustment, uh, to those rates. Uh, this also includes the One Compliance Hauling Officer. Uh, we received some direction from Council, uh, when we presented this department overview to you, uh, to further, uh, investigate our current processes for commercial hauling. So, we're in the process of doing that now, and, uh, this position would be projected to start June 1st, um, which gives us time to complete that analysis, make sure that we implement a business plan and some best practices before making that hire. So, pending your questions, Council?
Does anybody have a question on the, on the, the composition of the increase? I mean, significant increase. Uh, I mean, you all comfortable with that? I mean, it's been explained, but, I mean, I'm troubled by it. Um, I don't know that I have a solution for it, but it's a big number.
I think maybe a, a further breakdown of the operating expenditures. Um, I, you know, and I was going to bring this up at the end, my overall position on, we're seeing, and, and I'm sorry that you're standing at the podium. This isn't just aimed at you, it's, it's departmental-wide. What we continue to see year after year is our revenues have gone up by 12.2%, and coincidentally, our expenditures have also now gone up by 12.2%. We are spending as much more as we're bringing in, and I think that there needs to be a change in mentality from that perspective. So, even if we commit to saying, and I get it, costs have gone up for the city, just like they've gone up for the residents, we are not immune from inflation. The city has experienced inflation, just like everybody in this room, in their households. But, we have to be stewards of the taxpayer dollars. So, I think that it should be a, a policy of our city to say, you know what, even though the revenues went up by 12.2%, let's see if we can keep the expenditure increase to 10%. Because if, if departmental-wide, or, yeah, departmental-wide, we all can go down by 2%, 3%, we're talking about millions of dollars that could be saved every year. Um, so, I, I think that that should be an effort that could be made by city staff going forward. Um, I commend the efforts made last year to get us to roll back. If we can just, you know, a little bit from each department to cut down on those expenses, so they're not meeting the revenue increases every year, to me, that, that would be phenomenal. Um, but for this specifically, yeah, I would like to see a breakdown of the operating expenditure increases.
Okay, and, um, you didn't make mention, so FCC has undergone a, a change, is that correct? Were they, have they been purchased, or, or is that just a rumor?
I have not been made aware of it. So, FCC is, uh, actually expanding in the area, and I'm not aware of any.
No change, okay.
No change in ownership for that company.
Okay, and our current contract, uh, moves forward, and that's all incorporated into your numbers, as was negotiated and agreed?
So, so just to clarify a few points, if I may, um, So, so just to clarify a few points, if I may, these costs are actual contractual costs, so we don't really control the operational point of it.
Okay.
The, the increase comes in the fact that, number one, we have more households that are serviced, so they pay the, the monthly fees for that service, thus revenues go up, and expenditures go up the same, because the contractor is servicing those on their end. We're, we're maintaining the payments to the contractor for those. The only internal operations within this budget would be my current two staff members, the, the solid waste supervisor and her inspector that currently works for her. And then the, the CPI is written into that contract. When it was awarded last year, we did put a cap on it of 4%. I don't know if you recall, but our previous contract did not include a CPI adjustment, and towards the end of that contract, we ran into a lot of cost issues that affected levels of service for our, for our residents.
But I agree with Councilwoman Pontieri about the, you know, the constant, you know, search for, for those few points, which are very valuable, but you've balanced your revenue and expenses, as we've seen here, so. Any other questions from city council at this time?
No, I would just encourage the, oh, I'm sorry, no question. I would just say that I encourage the hauling officer and future initiatives and endeavors to be able to increase city revenues while potentially providing a needed service to our community and being able to offset some of the additional costs with in-housing, some of that stuff. So thank you for everything you do, Matt.
Yeah, I want to be very clear. Matt, I think, I think from a financial standpoint, you do a phenomenal job, both here and in other departments that you're, you have a hand in. So again, it's not aimed at you, and to the extent that any increases are contractual in nature, obviously, there's nothing we can do about that, but the other operational costs is what I'm speaking to with regards to kind of trying to make that effort organizational wise, wide to just, if we can just go down 1%, 2%, 3% every year, that can add up to big dollars.
And just a last question, informational.
Yes, sir.
Are we aware of any potential change in the destination of where this stuff goes? I know there's been some talk out there.
So, not at this time. We currently have an interlocal agreement with Volusia County to leverage a reduced rate for hauling to that location. I believe that is up for renewal this next fiscal year, so we're exploring that renewal to ensure that that relationship stays strong.
So, okay, so that's what I'm asking, is that potentially a threat to our budget in any way?
I've not been given any, you know, warning shots over the bow, as it were. We have a good relationship with Volusia County, solid waste at this point, and we'll look to secure that moving forward as well. I know they, the FCC also has other options that we can leverage, so there's some competition in that market, especially with St. John's is now moving to FCC, they have some transfer stations there, so there's a lot of opportunity for us.
So it's, it's, it's not a flashing red light right now that there could be some significant change in the way Volusia conducts their business with Flagler County?
No, sir.
With Palm Coast, I should say.
If, if we hear anything like that, we will definitely bring it before council.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much, okay.
Just a quick comment.
And Councilwoman?
Matt, I just want to say thank you to Public Works and all the cruising, to yourself, all the hard work that you guys do. You're out there working hard all the time for the city, so thank you so much, and thank you for the presentation.
I have the pleasure of representing probably the hardest working professionals that, that I've ever met in this.
You definitely are.
I agree with you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Chief Building Official Patrick Buckley will now present the building fund.
Good morning, mayor, council.
Good morning.
Patrick Buckley, chief building official, manager of the building division. A few quick comments, this is a rather small presentation, we get one slide out of the 50 or so that we've seen today, so that's probably a good thing. The building division operates as an enterprise fund, as you know. We're heavily regulated under state statutes, chapters 468 and 553. That's basically the licensing and operational requirements for building code administrators, and under 553, that's the Florida Building Code, which also establishes our rules for budgeting and budget carryovers from year to year. These, this chapter requires us to spend and spend our revenue directly on the enforcement of the Florida Building Code. We have 24 direct FTEs in the building division, includes the chief building official, me, our deputy chief building official, development process administrator, 12 building inspector FTEs, which three are vacant at this time, four plans examiner FTEs, one vacancy at this time, four development technicians, and one administrative staff assistant FTE. In this year's budget, we don't have any new positions. We're going to stretch staff even further, hopefully, as we continue to meet the objectives of the city and cover our service levels. In the 12-month period, as you see on the slide in front of you, from 7/1/23 to June 30th, 24, 16,406 permits reviewed with 15,796 issued, over 93,874 inspections performed. That's all city inspections, includes utilities, storm water, right-of-way several, but the bulk of those, probably 90% of those are all done by the building inspectors.
And Patrick, if I may, those numbers for permits are not just, you know, full, full construction projects, they could be for small upgrades, renovations, whatever as well, right, or smaller upgrades and renovations as well?
Green enclosures, sheds, water heaters.
Everything, right?
Everything, so, yeah, everything there. We are very busy. This year, our budget increases 10.5%, roughly $399,757. Bulk of that is in three categories, our personal services, operating expenditures, and interfund transfers. The personal services, of course, all your salaries, wages, benefits, insurance, and those expenses, that's a, a large percentage of our increase. The rest fall into our various allocations, IT fleet, maintenance fleet replacement, that sort of thing. And then the rest, interfund transfers, about $19,705. That leaves roughly around $13,000 for paper and pencils, which is small incremental stuff for the division to operate.
And if I may, in round numbers, since you put the number of permits reviewed, can you give me a round number for the prior year, prior fiscal year number of permits?
I don't know that off the top of my head. It's pretty close, actually, to the.
My recollection, it was in the 15,000 number, but we can look it up for you.
What I'm getting at, it's not a big increase, right? It's relatively flat?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, sir. That's it. That's all I have for you.
No questions. Thank you, Patrick.
I, I, I'm sorry, and again, you just have to educate me a little bit. So I see the fund balance appropriation of 300,000. Can you just describe that to me? That's the change of $300,000 on your third line over on the right-hand side?
Mayor Helena is going to cover it for you.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Yes, so your fund balance appropriations is part of the 90-10 reduction in fees for the building permits. So we're collecting right now 90% of the fee. The other 10% is fund balance that has been held. So this is, the amount that you're allowed to maintain is determined by the state. So in order to sustain compliance, we have to use up those fund balances.
So this is an adjustment to, to, to keep in line with the state mandate?
That is correct.
Understood, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that was a good, brief presentation. We appreciate that. Thank you, Patrick.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Patrick. Director Doug Akins will now present the IT enterprise fund.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
Doug Akins, IT director. The IT enterprise fund is funded by revenue from fiber and broadband services as well as cell tower revenue. The fiber revenue comes from services such as dark fiber leases and services we provide to municipal partners, such as Flagler County schools. The expected increase in revenue in the upcoming fiscal year comes from annual contractual escalators, as well as $134,000 in appropriated fund balance. In our current fiscal year, $374,000 were budgeted for consulting services to assist us in inventorying and documenting all the fiber and assets related to the city's network. However, with the addition of a half FTE in the IT enterprise fund, we began the task of inventorying the assets in-house. Our goal is to do as much of the work as we can in-house, and then to use outside help in the areas we are unable to complete on our own. During this process of inventorying our assets, we have identified items that need replacement or repair, such as handholds and enclosures that are collapsing, and have allocated funds in the upcoming fiscal year's budget to address those items. The remaining budget lines are normal operational and maintenance items. Do you have any questions on the IT enterprise fund?
Vice mayor?
No, I have none.
My only question is, where do we see any revenues that we get from cell tower leases?
They are all included in this fund, they are part of this fund. So this year, there is a projected minimal increase just based on the revenue share that we receive, which I'd be very conservative in what we expect to receive, so there is funds in here for the construction of one tower we're anticipating, but I've gotten a lot of interest from tower companies looking for our wireless master plan refresh at the end of the year, so we're expected to hopefully include more than what we're projecting to receive.
Okay, so is that just included in the other revenue portion? That's what I'm trying to figure out, is where, where do we actually see that?
I believe charges for services.
Charges for services?
Yes, ma'am.
It's in that number? Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much for the presentation. Question just for our council and also for you. Are we still moving forward with trying to get the server room upstairs or anything like that? That was an initiative that I'm not certain where it has gone. I very much could have diverted to a different solution, I'm just, I don't, I don't know if the rest of the council is aware of how that played out and then where we're at now.
Yeah, we went out to bid for the, the build out of the room, and I think that was approved at the last council meeting, so that's moving forward.
Nice.
Yes, sir.
And Doug, if I may, a quick question. Do you keep in touch with other government organizations like CDDs and/or like the Agriculture Museum? And the only reason I ask is because I know that they are all contemplating cell towers as well. I don't know if they have any effect on each other, but, or do we operate independently of what they do?
Mostly independently.
Independently?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. In closing, we want to remind the public that access to this presentation, as well as budget worksheets and previous presentations, are available by clicking the budget preparation tile on the city website.
Any final questions today or comments from city council members?
I have none.
Other, go ahead.
Just thank you to staff for all the work that you've put into this today, and again, I just continue to encourage us to look at those operational budgets as we move forward. I know these are enterprise funds, but at the end of the day, we still need to ask for fees, so it's still really important that we continue to try to keep those costs down.
I also would thank staff for all the hard work to put these presentations together, but I think you've heard very clearly from every single, every council member today that we're taking a hard look at offering policies that will reduce any potential taxation to its smallest increase, if, if at all. You've kind of heard that culture from city council, and I think we're all in agreement with that. So again, appreciate the hard work, and I think what you're really doing is you're helping us fine tune our understanding of all of this information and data, so thank you. All right, we now move to our, no, I'm sorry, we will, this is a workshop, but special budget workshop. I will open up this agenda item for public comment, so if there are any members of the public that would like to comment at this time, come on up.
Hi, Kathy Ostrino, thanks for having me. I pulled some reports this morning, because some folks are receiving messages that almost alarmist kind of talk about the, the influx that's happening here. So, so, and I'll give these, if I can, to Ms. Cook. But I just want to point out, as of this morning, in Palm Coast, there are 1,007 residential units actively listed, 338 pending. I have pulled the expired over from January to July, and that, that number is, is increasing steadily. I pulled the days, the average sales days, and that too is increasing. I have the month's worth of inventory, and that's substantially increased. And a couple other things, just so you know, in the past seven days, we've had a 198 price decrease. So I'm just a little concerned about the message. And with that, I would like to know, a couple questions, if I can. I'd like to know, of the approved residential units, how many are, are coming up, already approved but not quite broke ground yet? And I'm wondering, too, of all of our apartments, do we have vacancy rates that we know of? Thank you.
Okay, and if you would, so you're going to pass that good, and you'll do a comment card for us, just so we can get those questions answered for you, okay? Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment at this time?
Good morning, Sandra Shank. Thank you to all of the personnel for their wonderful presentation on the budget. I have a couple of questions that I would like to have addressed. With the water distribution, the $150,000 for additional meters, I wanted to know, when are the old meters replaced? What is the cycle of that? Because it was also mentioned that the need for retiring those meters could actually impact people's water bills, the accuracy of the reading. So I really would like to know how often, when they are scheduled to be replaced. The other one is, can we delineate, delineate the cost for retired meters versus new construction meters, and what is the cost recovery? And thank you to Councilwoman Pontieri for emphasizing the need to know what the cost recovery is for new construction and not burdening residents who are currently in their homes. And in regards to the infrastructure, the capital improvements, I would suggest looking at the EPA bipartisan infrastructure law that awards, designates $50 billion for infrastructure improvements. So when you're talking about consulting, hiring a consultant for grants, I think we should also begin to kind of look at it in-house to see where those options are, because I do agree with you, mayor, that if you get a consultant, it should be pay on production, for sure, that we shouldn't just be hiring somebody and if they are not able to secure the funds, but their funding is connected to the securing, securing of those grants. And I would like to see, when we're asking for additional personnel, what is the increase of this personnel? How will it impact the level of service for our residents? I think that every department that has made a presentation that included an increase in FTE, that they should show what their current FTE is and how, and what is their production, you know? Just to make a request and not show us where they currently have personnel, what the current FTE is, not really wise. So I really think that we should request that transparency. And I think that is, and I want to thank the building department, the building permits funding, he actually said 24 direct FTE, so I was really happy about that. And the other thing I wanted to point out was that, I'm sorry, I was taking notes and I tried to highlight so I wouldn't get lost, but for example, on one of the funding positions, and I just selected one, there was about a $72,000 position. But when you look at the housing cost, 30% of that means that that person should pay only $1,800 a month towards housing. So I want you to figure out, at a $72,000 position, how are we really affecting our employees currently with housing?
And if you would, if you get the, if you, just on the comment card, put a note there so we can follow up on, on your questions. Would you do that? Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this presentation at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. Any final comment from the dais?
I have none.
Really quickly, to Ms. Ostrino's question, I think we had asked staff to get us some vacancy rates, and I think those were coming back to us for the apartments, but just so that we know what we're looking at, what the need is. I, I'm pretty sure that was coming down the pipeline fairly soon, is that correct?
I don't remember that, but I'll look into it, and it's not something we track.
No, I know it's not something we track, but I know for a fact, I brought it up on the dais, and it was something that staff had agreed that they would look into. I can ask Kaylee for the minutes and figure out exactly what that looked like. But I had made the same inquiry, because I think it's important. And then also, I just want to point out, with regards to Ms. Shank's comment, I think as a policy, we had agreed, and this was my communication with Acting City Manager Ms. Johnson, any new FTEs were supposed to be in furtherance of our SAP this year. So any new FTEs that are being proposed by staff are in direct, are a direct result of our priorities that we had set up here. So specifically with regards to stormwater, obviously, that was a very heavy focus for us. So I commend staff in looking to that and narrowing those requests, and I commend Acting City Manager Johnston for really being kind of hard pressed on making sure that those FTEs are in furtherance of our established priorities.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And just with regard to the vacancy rates, it would seem to me that would be a natural part of the development order process, especially for new projects, that staff would be looking at vacancy rates in the area. Because if I look at the development order requirements that we talk about with each development, it seems to me one of them certainly easily fits that conversation in terms of its benefit or need to the community. So I'm just underscoring the need to be aware of that. Anyone else?
Yep, I would just reiterate my ask for future budget cycles, that these type of presentations do have a couple of things. One, when we do have additional FTEs, that we pin them to a level of service that we're going to be improving, or that we pin them to our strategic action plan items, even if it's just an enumeration on the bottom of these slides. That way, when we have people come in and they're here from the public, this is such a long process that, you know, it kind of, it'll do it justice.
So I appreciate that, because you've got, you've got multi, you're spinning several different plates at the same time, but they're related to each other, and if you let one slow, it's going to fall off. So pinning the Strategic Action Plan priority directly to the budget item shows that that's something that city council has already discussed and probably approved or agreed on, which means that if we're going to cut or change, we have to have that discussion again, because we've changed the instruction or the policy, if you will, that we have offered out to staff. So, so we're clear. All right, with that, thank you very much. And I'm going to suggest, do you all want to take a short break now? Or do you want to get to an introduction point? Jason, help me with this.
Mayor, City Council, I think it would be good to go through the housing element, which could take, you know, 30 minutes to an hour, or maybe 45 minutes to an hour, which would get us to a point for lunch.
That's fine, yeah.
Sure.
Let's go.
Okay.
That's a lot of three-ring binders.
While they're sending up Mayor, City Council, so we're getting near the end of our comp plan work. Today, we have five elements to go through, because we didn't get through housing on the last one. I'm sure Ray will cover this at the end, but our, our schedule has three more meetings in it after this. The, I believe August the 13th is kind of a cleanup, where Ray and staff will go through some of the items that were requested for changes, updates, or additions through city council, planning board, and the public. And then I believe it's on the, August the 27th is when you'll have your public hearing and adoption of the comp plan, and then it will go to the state for review, and then it will come back in October for final adoption.
So where, where are we on the original 18-month timeline?
We are directly on it, but we do not have much wiggle room.
So what does that mean? We're at 12 months, we're at 16?
We are, what do we got? August, September, October, we have three months to go.
So we're at 15 of the 18 months, give and take.
Correct.
Thank you. Good evening. Mayor, City Council, Ray Teiner, Deputy Director, Chief Development Officer, Community Development. As Mr. DeLorenzo pointed out, we're here for our last series of our drafts of our comprehensive plan. Can you hear me?
Just pull it closer to you so it's comfortable.
That's fine. So we got a team effort here today with some of the presentation that you'll hear, a variety of folks. So first of all, you know, I'm going to do an overview, and then you remember at the last workshop, we didn't get to housing, so we will update the housing element and go through that. We had the future land use element, followed by the transportation, and lastly, the capital improvements element, and then we'll talk about next steps. So just real quick, just like keep highlighting the guiding principles. You remember all the outreach that we did, and our citizens and our community established our guiding principles, and you can see that in your draft, goals, objectives, and policies of all your elements. And the basic principle of these guiding principles is to ensure and to make sure that we are connected to what the citizens' voices were and how they relate to the goals, objectives, and policies of the plan. So the first element that we want to talk about is the housing, right? So you remember the last workshop, and I believe city council really liked that term, life-stage housing. And so basically, in summary, life stage is another term that we have been utilizing during this process, and includes a spectrum of residential options tailored to meet the diverse needs and circumstances of individuals and families across various stages of life, right? So if you form housing and needs and different needs that individuals have based on the life stage of where they are, for example, you may be a retiree, so your housing choices will be a little bit different than, let's say, a family of three. So it really encompasses where you are in that stage of life. So with the comprehensive plan element, we really tried hard, I guess, to focus not just on one specific life stage, you know, like affordable housing, but encompasses from a holistic perspective. So with that said, well, and I just wanted, before I pass it on to Mr. Papa, you know, and if you really look at what we receive from our citizens and the community, if you look and highlight a few of these, for example, entry-level housing, more housing-type options, affordable housing for families, rents for young professionals, senior apartments, you know, not a lot of apartments here, more affordable housing. So when you look what we heard from the community, it really was diverse. It was really stressing that life-stage housing of different options that different people at their stage of life and need for different, different types of choices.
Hey, Ray, just a quick question. Does live local sort of cover all of this?
I'm sorry?
The live local legislation?
Live local is a, is a state legislation that will cover a portion of it. What, what the state legislation did was they allowed for, preempted local government to allow for a process to have affordable housing without going through a public process.
And that's sort of mixed in with some commercial too, right?
Yes, it is. Like for the city of Palm Coast, we fall into a 20, we fall into a certain exemption, but they still can go and do this, implement this statute in our commercial and industrial zoning district. But in Palm Coast, it still has to be a mixed use. And we're going to be bringing a presentation to city council in the near future to go over that.
So Vice Mayor, that, that legislation, which, you know, it got itself better baked in the, in its second round up there, is incredibly, we're very optimistic about it. And as you said, it sets the table for what we might be able to do in terms of these different, the input from the community in the future. So it does set up that possibility if we create the policy to guide it properly for the community. I think that's incredibly important, because it's not perfect, and we
What is?
What's that?
What is?
Very little.
Other than Nick's jokes.
Exactly.
It's definitely one of, one of the tools in the toolbox, I would say.
I, I got a smile out of the planning component over here, so that's good.
Okay, so Mayor, City Council, I'm going to give it to Jose, Senior Mayor, for the presentation.
Thanks, Mayor.
Good morning, Mayor, members of city council.
Good morning.
Jose Papa for the Community Development Department. To go through the goals, objectives, and policies of the housing element of our comprehensive plan, as with our previous presentations, we'll give you some background leading up to the goal, which we'll state verbally, provide you with the objectives, and a summary of the policies within, under each of those objectives. So most of the data provided here has come from the five-year American Community Survey, as well as the Schimberg Center for Housing Studies. So, and again, you know, we could go through a day-long presentation of nothing but data and statistics on housing. So, you know, I have to, we have to make some judgment on what would be most applicable or what would be useful, but we certainly cannot cover all of this unless you want to sit here for a day, day in front of me, to listen to data and statistics.
But you're suggesting that, because you're using, I guess that's a national survey, that you're identifying the fact that Palm Coast is obviously very unique in terms of its, you know, best lifestyle offerings and would be, would depart in some areas from the national survey?
Well, that's if I was to make a comparison with the national survey.
Right, okay.
I'm just suggesting that there are many more data and statistics available. You just cannot provide all of it. So as those issues come up, we'll be happy to go back and pull them for you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, the, the national survey that he's referring, referring to has both local stats for, that are specific to Palm Coast as well as national stats.
Okay, so we can see both, thank you.
So, yeah, he's explaining that you can both, that this gives you a tool to both see the, how they, how they reflect locally in that survey as well as nationally. It's a, it's a product of the U.S. Census.
All right, so let's just, just start here. So 89% of our housing stock is in single-family detached units. Of all those homeowners with a mortgage, 33% of them spend more than 30% on housing, which includes utilities. And we use the 30% benchmark on spending for housing, because that's the typical threshold that lenders and most housing programs tell you that you shouldn't spend more than 30, ideally, you shouldn't spend more than 30% of your income on, on housing. Number goes up significantly for, for renters. 49% of the renters spend more than 30% of incomes on, on housing. Within the city of Palm Coast, 62% of all those renters earn less than 100% of the AMI, area median income. And in terms of the number of units, 78% of the occupied units are owner-owned, that is, they're owned by the occupant, while 22% are rent or occupied. So with rent or occupy, that's of course multifamily and even single families, since not all single-family units are occupied by the owner. Some are available for rent. And looking at the history of building permits over the last five years, and this is just a snippet on, on the data, if you just look at the percentage of the total, in the past five years, that's 2019 to 2023, building permits, and, and I say building permits, but it's really provided to you in terms of units, because one multifamily dwelling building, which might have 30 units, would be one building permit. But, so I give, the numbers provided to you here in terms of percentage are, are units. So in the past five years, 72% of permit, new units are single-family, another 15% in townhomes or duplexes, and so 13% are in multifamily dwelling units. So that goal, Goal 3.1 is to promote housing options for all income levels. As an objective, we are to provide adequate and affordable housing opportunities, that is through the support of construction of adequate and affordable housing, by providing opportunities that accommodate the housing needs of existing and future residents, of households classified as extremely low, very low, low, and moderate income, and through a variety of mechanisms and development incentives. Some of the policies we have there, in summary, promote diverse housing types and densities throughout the city, ensure affordable housing is dispersed to prevent concentration in any specific area, provide assistance and incentives for developers, including site identification and in-kind services, and incorporate innovative development options, development options in the land development code to facilitate attainable housing. Second objective would be to use some of the state and federal funding available to implement our housing programs. The objective is to seek funding from federal and state housing and community development, community development sources to formulate and establish housing implementation programs. And again, just using some of the, those fundings for, to provide homeownership opportunities for various income levels, provide local support to developers for affordable multifamily projects, to expedite processes and incentives, and collaborate, again, with our partner Flagler County to maximize funding for affordable multifamily units and explore alternative funding sources. Going through that goal, before moving on to the next goal, do we have any comments or questions regarding that?
I have none.
I'm just going to hold my comments to the end.
Anybody right now? No, please go ahead and proceed.
Yes, okay. Our second goal is probably more statute, statutory requirement, and this is to, to identify households with special needs and to integrate them within, into the residential, throughout the entirety of the, the whole residential community. So here, again, just the background, you know, as a city, we accommodate a number of different community residential homes, and these are typically your, your, your small, what you might call assisted living facilities in a single-family unit, where you have, can have up to six residents, up to some of our newer facilities such as, and I can't remember their name, but like Sable Palms and Benton Village on, on Bel Air Boulevard, but those types of facilities that provide beds, that provide a range of, of assistance to residents.
If I may, just because you're at that point, is there some kind of a, a national average number, a per capita number on the number of beds that a community ought to strive for with regard to ALF services? Anybody aware of that?
I've not heard of one.
All market-driven?
I have not come across any
Because I know with hospitals, they absolutely have data that supports the number of beds per, per X number of residents, so that's how they plan. But ALFs, we're not, we're not seeing that.
I've not come across any
Interesting, okay.
Any study or documentation says you should have this much. So Goal 3.2, as we said, it's probably statutory more than anything else, that households with special needs shall be integrated into and dispersed throughout residential areas. So Objective 3.2.1, providing for housing sites for special needs groups, supporting, again, the community residential homes and even foster care facilities within residential areas and areas of mixed-use developments. To promote this, we have policies that we will continue to adhere to the citing requirements for community residential homes per Florida statutes, seek partnerships and agencies to expand housing options for special needs individuals, and support integration of community residential homes and foster care facilities in residential and mixed-use areas. A second objective under that, providing those affordable housing for residents with special needs. And that's provide adequate and affordable housing opportunities to accommodate households with special needs within, with an emphasis on provisions for the elderly. Again, here, we, we look at the, the use of ship or CDBG funds for affordable housing for special needs individuals. That is really more to keep them into, to stay at the unit that they're living in, which is typically what we do with our CDBG funds, that if, if a household needs to have a more accessible bathroom or a ramp, our CDBG funds or ship funds are available to provide that improvement to assist them in being able to stay in the home that they're in. Encouraging the continuum of care facilities by supporting aging and place, supporting, and supporting aging and place transitions, you know, these are typically type of development where you have a range of, again, different units that might range from independent living to one that's, to assisted living, all the way to nursing care. So that's, that's a policy in the comp plan. And finally, collaborating with private nonprofit sectors for housing provision, including transitional housing initiatives. As a policy, we're there, we're here to provide technical assistance to, as staff is As a policy, we're there, we're here to provide technical assistance to, as staff is available. I would venture to say that nobody on staff is a professional when it comes to specialized needs, and that's.
And Jose, before you change, I assume there's a licensing requirement for many, if not all, of these particular dwelling types?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And that's through the city?
Uh, no, it's through the state.
Through the state, okay, thank you.
May I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I, I like all of the ideas that you're presenting here. However, one of my major concerns is when we talk about affordability and housing, it's, it's put into a different category from these special needs housings. So, when we talk about affordability, I think the first thing comes to my mind, yes, okay, affordability, but we have to also take into consideration that enable for individuals to afford these homes, there has to be jobs here in Palm Coast. So, that's another concern of mine, is that we have the economic development factor included here, so that there are jobs that are being provided for these individuals when we want to talk about affordability.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And then when we go through the future land use element, we do have some economic development policies that would probably address what your concern.
Okay, thank you.
And it's tied to housing. So, moving on, our, our third goal is to maintain the existing housing stock and to protect the residential areas. Here, the basic data I can provide is that forty-five percent of our housing stock was built before two thousand, or older than twenty-two years old, and it is there, of course, that after, at a certain age, your housing unit begins to need more rehab or more maintenance, whether it's the AC unit or water, water heater, or even if leaky faucets, those are all things that, you know, could be a detriment to our housing stock. And so, there, there is a need to provide that assistance that will allow our residents, especially those who are of low, moderate income, to be able to, to help them maintain their, their home.
And I just want to interrupt, because I want everyone, and I'm sure we're all aware of it, but just remember now with these insurance companies requiring new roofs at fifteen years, whether they need it or not, you know?
I've heard of stories of seven years.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, you could have a, you could have a roof that's a perfectly great case, but if, you know, shape, but if you don't replace it, roofs are expensive, and I've talked to so many of our seniors that are like, you know, thinking of, their home may be paid for, but the insurance company is requiring these roofs. I've talked to folks that have said they're thinking of dropping their insurance and just taking the risk, which is, you know, something awful happens, but it is a problem. I know we can't solve it here, it's something that needs to be solved in Tallahassee with these insurance companies, but it's just something we need to keep in mind. Another place where especially our seniors, but everyone, is being squeezed, and roofs are expensive.
Good point.
And, and this is just finally, final bullet there, that through our engagement with the community, one thing that we kept hearing over and over again is that, you know, the neighborhoods need to continue to be clean, and that we need to continue to maintain the home's curb appeal in our, in our community, and that is that preservation of the suburban appeal of, of our, of our city. So, it is tied into being able to maintain our housing stock in, in, in a condition that doesn't become a slum or blight to, to the neighborhood. So, again, going through the objectives here, protecting the existing housing stock, the objective is to conserve and maintain, improve existing housing stock and eliminate substandard housing conditions through code provisions and incentive programs to require NRAS builders, private homeowners and landlords in making structural and aesthetic improvements. Some of the policies underneath this objective would be to continue to rig, the rigorous permitting and inspection efforts for rental properties to maintain a defined standard, enforce architectural and aesthetic regulations to ensure high-quality housing.
Jose, can I interrupt, just because we're right there right now, and just help me with this? It sounds to me that that could be in direct conflict with the discussion on the affordability of housing. So, I, I, I see a, you know, a push-pull there. And I don't know, how do you, how do you relate to that as you, in the rest of your plan, I guess? If I'm speaking out of turn, City Council, let me know, it just pops out to me.
Can you further, I don't understand.
Yeah, if we're going to be, continue to be very strict about the enforcement of architectural and aesthetic regulations, I'll give you an example.
Oh, I understand.
Two-car garages.
Right.
Or, there's a whole list of other possibilities. I just want to make sure that we are not handcuffing ourselves or diluting our thought that we're going to make housing that's more affordable if we continue to force or enforce these regulations.
I, I think, Mayor, this is specifically talking about the existing housing stock, so for instance, if somebody goes to repaint their house, making sure that it's, it's, it meets with our code, I don't, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think this applies to new housing that is created.
Well, or renovate, renovate an existing structure.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think this section, and Mayor, we address what your concern is.
In another section.
And other sections of it, like looking at our code to what can we do to make certain areas a little bit more affordability.
Looking for an opportunity, so that this, this also links to the other section.
Right. And, and this one too, like for existing areas, like you really, you know, this is pretty broad, you want to have a pretty good code enforcement division, right, that you don't want your neighborhood to be blighted, you know, and, and the grass and weeds and this, this is all a big component of it. So, part of this is, is everything, you know, there's tools in the toolbox to maintain our existing housing stock and the quality of our existing housing stock, you know, utilizing CDBG in the county on retrofitting houses and getting them improved with different standards, and every so often, there's some good grants that come out that we tap into, that we can utilize, but also the tool of, of code enforcement, right? If we didn't have a code enforcement, you know, what would the neighborhoods look like for existing neighborhoods?
And, and the other reason I bring it up, just so I'm more clear, is that there is discussion around the state where residential properties might consider having a second dwelling unit on the property, which would provide an income and make housing more affordable for the homeowner. It's not a discussion that we've had yet, but it is a discussion going around the state which would apply to this kind of a section.
The accessory dwelling unit?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm antsy to get to that.
Okay.
Yeah, because I hear you. I have a question, but I'll wait until you're done with this slide.
I'm sorry?
Are, are you done with this slide? I, I have a question, but I'll, I'll wait until you're done.
Um, yeah, I'll just go through the last objective, if you don't mind, and then that's just, again, again, going back to protecting predominantly residential areas from the intrusion of incompatible or more intensive land uses. Providing, again, a lot of these are implemented through the Land Development Code, creating development standards that ensure greater setback and buffering to protect residential areas, evaluating proposed land use changes near residential neighborhoods using established compatibility criteria. Again, these are to be implemented when we update our Land Development Code based on these policies. And to restrict non-residential use of residential lots in platted subdivisions and conduct compatibility analysis for new developments adjacent to residential areas, considering factors like lot sizes, proximity to roadways, and potential nuisance factors from a new use intruding into a, an existing neighborhood. But yes, so that's, that concludes that goal.
So, my question was with regards to the third bullet point under three-point-three-point-two. When you say restrict non-residential use of residential lots in platted subdivisions, two questions. The non-residential use, we're not limiting home businesses that are appropriate for single-family residents, like a CPA firm or something to that effect, correct?
Yes, ma'am. If, if it's covered by stat, state statutes that it's allowable, then yes, we, we abide by state statutes.
Okay, perfect. And then, why not, why are we limited, limiting this to platted subdivisions? We have our infalots as well, so should we not limit it in this manner?
I, I believe that maybe the, the definition of platted subdivisions includes our ITT lots, if that's what you're referring to.
Does, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And finally, moving on to the next goal, the, the diversity in housing. Again, the five-year American Community Survey, there's about forty thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-one residential units here in the city. Again, the majority of it, eighty-nine percent, are single-family detached units, and less than five and a half percent are in multifamily buildings of three units or more. So, maybe what we view as a typical apartment are, those types of units are, compose of a, a small amount of our overall units. And again, just looking at the trend between 2010 and 2022 for household growth, the, the growth has mainly come in the sixty-five-plus age cohort, which grew from about thirty-three percent of all households to forty-two percent of all households. Now, the other age cohorts, under twenty-five years, twenty-five to forty-four, forty-five to sixty-four, decreased the share of overall households, but I think we need to be clear here that since the size of the pie has increased, right, our population has increased, although their slice of the pie has gotten smaller, they are, because of a larger pie, that, those numbers have increased, and I'll just pick on the twenty-five to forty-four year age cohort, which in 2010 composed, was composed of seven thousand twenty-seven households. In 2022, it did increase to seventy-six, sixty, but again, just the, the decrease due to the, the size of the, the, the other cohorts, mainly the sixty-five and over increasing in terms of percentage.
But wouldn't, but from 2010 to 2022, that takes into account, so change between 2010, that twelve-year difference, is that accounted for in here? What percentage of those are new residents is really what I'm thinking, I think you can extrapolate that if.
Yeah, I, well.
Because you're going to be, you know, twelve years older when you re.
Sure, sure, sure. And I'm not sure that I can extrapolate from, from that what would be a new percentage, but, well, you could say that there were eight thousand, eight hundred new households.
So, you're asking with the natural aging of the community?
So, that probably is the, the number of new residents into the city, the eighty-eight, eighty-eight hundred additional households, because if we were to remain static and just take them through the cohort, you'd have to take the twenty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-four and just take that, so, if my math is, if I'm thinking mathematically, correct. So, based on that background, again, we looked at the responses from our community engagement and the things that we received, housing affordability, housing diversity, in terms of housing types and options, tying public transportation to housing affordability, entry-level housing, and one apartments in, in town center. So, the objectives under this goal, to ensure accessible housing for all life stages, providing a diverse range of housing options that accommodate the evolving needs and preferences of residents throughout all stages of life. Policies under this objective, enable diverse housing options through land use and zoning regulations to accommodate different income levels, ages and life stages, promote aging in place by increasing access to appropriate and affordable housing near essential services. And there is a program provided by the Department of Elder Affairs, called Liveable Community, which provides for different criteria in terms of, you know, what makes an ideal community for, for, for the elderly, and so looking at that and striving to, striving to achieve some of those, those, those criteria that they have as part of that program. And finally, the, the second objective, providing adequate sites for, and this is very statutory, based on the language, to provide adequate sites for residential mobile homes and manufactured buildings. And so here, it's just, you know, permit manufactured homes meeting aesthetic standards in residential zones and establish those specific zones for mobile manufactured exempt from certain regulations. Consider factors like road access, utilities and buffering when citing these types of, of residential units, and developing comprehensive regulations in the Land Development Code to cover landscaping, setbacks, parking, stormwater management and community amenities for mobile manufactured home zoning districts. Just to summarize this, we, we have in our Land Development Code such a zoning district, but it does not exist anywhere on land that we have an area designated for, for a mobile home and manufactured buildings. And that is, concludes the housing element.
Councilwoman, did you have some comments you were holding at this time, or?
I, I, I do, yes, thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
So, when I look at the housing and what we're trying to achieve, I have kind of three overall high-level thoughts. One, I am ardently against anything that affects home rule. So, to the extent Live Local comes in and says, "We understand that you zoned XYZ plat as being appropriate and industrial over there, but we're not going to make you turn that into residential," I have a big issue with that. It doesn't mean that I don't think that we should have this affordable life-stage housing. It does mean, however, that I don't think the state should be dictating where it should be. So, to the extent that we can insulate ourselves from that, we need to make every effort to do so. I understand we fall under that eighty-twenty exemption right now, we need to, in our future land use, ensure that we still fit under that exception, so that the state is not dictating where our affordable housing should be, because we, as the residents and representatives, are the best people to make that determination, not somebody in Tallahassee who doesn't live here. So, I just want us to keep that top of mind as we look at different, I know when we get to the future land use, there's a new kind of designation for zoning that we're looking at, we just need to really keep that in mind. Second, conceptually, I agree that we should deviate from previously required design standards such as your two-car garage in order to provide affordable housing. However, I also think that in our, whether it's in our LDC or it's in the comp plan, there need to be limitations as far as how that's done and to the extent, i.e. the amount of houses that it can be done with. I also think that this, the most successful way to introduce life-stage housing is to intersperse it with the regular housing, so that somebody who doesn't have a two-car garage is next to a house that does have a two-car garage, and you don't really feel it, right? So, somebody may live next to a home that falls under the, the workforce housing kind of category, but they don't realize it, and I think that's the way it should be. To me, when we cluster things, that's kind of where you start to, in my mind, see a dip in the quality of life in certain areas, and I don't want to see that for our workforce residents. They should be able to live in the same neighborhoods and have the same amenities as our other residents. So, when I'm, when I'm looking at kind of overall what we start to approve, and especially for the future land use part of this, and I'm just using this as an example, you know, we have percentages, so twenty percent of the housing in certain areas should be allowed to deviate from these design standards, something like that, where I don't see that currently anywhere, and I don't know if that's more appropriate for the LDC because it's more of a technical thing, but I would like to see that as a part of the conversation. Finally, I have the same concern that Councilwoman Hyder has, when we look at what we, what we define as affordable, and I will tell you that I have seen developer and/or attorney for the developer, after developer, stand at that podium and say, "Oh, well, we need these apartments and we need this density increase for affordability." And then I see what they're pricing their apartments at, and they are not affordable. So, my, my point is that I think that there could be abuse of the system in the name of affordability to get density incentives and things like that, and that is not what the intent of what we're trying to do is. All good intentions get abused if we do not put guardrails on them. So, to the extent we say, first of all, I'm totally against density incentives, I want to make that very clear, I do not think that a developer or a builder who comes in and says, "Oh, I'm going to put in a certain amount of affordable housing, therefore I should get some density bonus," I'm one hundred percent against that. I think that we should be attracting quality builders that do not require those types of incentives. That being said, to the extent my colleagues don't agree with me, I do think that there should be a limit to that. So, in other words, the density incentives cannot be beyond ten percent of what would otherwise be approved. So, again, when we're looking at. So, again, when we're looking at, maybe this is more appropriate for the LDC and not the comp plan, I don't know. I would look to staff and my colleagues for that discussion. But I think that there need to be limitations and guardrails put on these things, because, again, I've seen abuse of this already with, "Oh, well, you know, we need twenty percent more density in order to increase the market supply, and that will drive prices down." That has not happened. And so, that's an excuse to pump in more density. And I don't think that at the end of the day, benefits the consumer. So I want to see us make sure that we employ policy that is actually furthering our intent here and not giving developers and builders an excuse just to pump more people in.
Okay. It looks like we have, just a question, do we have a history of offering density incentives? I'm just not clear on that.
No.
And don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting that guardrails aren't important, I just want to know, have we been guilty of that?
No. The only thing that we do have is, it's not really a density bonus, because you can never exceed your gross density, it's really rare, but we do allow in our code for all, all new residential areas to be able to do what we call cluster development, where you can count, if you put your open space or conservation area into wetlands and a conservation, you get a certain percentage of twenty percent to allow that to count as upland acres. That's the only real bonus that we have, but again, you're not exceeding your gross density, you're just allowing the cluster to preserve some open space.
And that's fine, historically, we haven't had it, but I want to make sure we don't, we're not, we don't fall victim to it in the future. And the other thing, too, is I have a real issue subsidizing any type of housing with local dollars. So I think the CBD, G, and CHIP programs are fantastic, we need to continue to utilize those programs, continue to utilize anything from, you know, the state and federal, but when we start to give any tax incentives or financial breaks, that affects the local bottom line, the local dollars coming in. And I, and I have an issue with that, because then we are, in fact, subsidizing housing with local dollars. So I think that there are mechanisms that we can use that still allow for, for these types of products to come into the community and still keeping with the spirit of Palm Coast, but not affecting the dollars that are coming in or affecting the quality of life.
So, I have one question. How would you propose that we try to incentivize developers to co-mingle or intermingle these different levels of houses? And I think clustering is a natural market effect, where I agree, I would love to see more affordable housing dispersed amongst, you know, houses that may be late-stage living or however you want to say this. But how are you going to convince developers to build a house without a two-car garage in a neighborhood of homes of, that do have a two-car garage, where they could build a two-car garage home and make more money?
So, you're questioning the viability of the business model?
Yeah, I was just asking.
My immediate answer would be, if I look to a development that I visited, I'll just pick it out, like Babcock Ranch, they've been very creative in their ability to intersperse houses of, that we would, we might naturally look at of different valuations, which could affect the appraisal value. Because at the end of the day, when a house is sold, I mean, it's going to get appraised based on wherever the closest house to it sold for. And if it's got less square footage or less, whatever it is, it's going to affect that appraisal price. But some of those communities have found ways, because they have brought in builders that might be taking advantage of perhaps some economies of scale, that are able and will agree upfront by virtue of the development order to be required to cluster and to build those variety of dwelling units. That's the best answer that I can offer. Hopefully, city council members have a, can add to that.
So I think, well, first of all, those houses are cheaper to build as well, so your bottom line's going to be, going to reflect that. And in the inside, you're talking about perhaps maybe spec housing, so your spec kind of cabinets, countertops, things like that, compared to a different product inside other homes, that you may not be able to tell from the outside. And, and, and from my, let me just be very clear, from my perspective, and I have a very humble upbringing, and, you know, an example, when I was talking to staff, was we lived in a townhome that was affordable housing, but it was next to townhomes that were not. And so those were interspersed, and, and, and again, I think that every buddy should be entitled to, you know, we got to go to the same pool and use the same gym that other families got to use, and I think that that should be available to people. So, again, to the mayor's point, there are builders who are very apt at this, we need to attract them. I do not think that it is worthwhile for us to cater to people who say, "Well, I'm not going to allow my bottom line to be affected by, because I have to engage in certain type of accommodations for workforce housing." I think that's unacceptable. People will want to build houses here, and we should not be catering to them, they should be coming to us.
And I guess my end-all question is, how do we attract those type of builders, is what I'm getting at, is how do we actually move the needle in that direction to do that?
Now, is that, if, may I ask, would that be potentially a function of economic development? Have we cast a broad enough net on a national basis, because we represent a big enough opportunity for a larger concern, perhaps? I mean, what we've enjoyed over many, many years is a culture of local and custom home builders, which have served the community beautifully according to the original, I hate to refer to it, but ITD plan. But I'm kind of looking for a new mindset now, and I just happen to believe that those builders, and I'll, I'll, I'll throw it out to the planning staff, if those kind of building, builders exist nationally and could be attracted here, again, that's part of the economic development, I dare say, the three-legged model, because we talked about jobs being necessary in order to have beds where those workers can sleep, and therefore the businesses will come. So it gets very connected to economic development as well.
I'm not disagreeing with the overall idea, I'm just asking, like, how we get there.
And, and I just, and I've heard you now a couple of times, kind of go after the Live Local thing. And it did come out of Tallahassee, my understanding is, it basically was unanimous, except for one vote out of Tallahassee. So I know our hands are tied, it's state legislation, we're gonna have to follow it, correct?
Well, let me, you know, the Live Local, absolutely for the straight zoning, okay? So, you've got straight zoning of commercial, straight zoning of industrial, but our opinion, it does not apply to master plan developments, okay? You have a development agreement that's set in place, like for town center, you have certain entitlements, it would not hold true for master plan developments that are created, that's a, that's separate zoning. But yes, for straight zoning, that, that is a tool in the toolbox, I would address other issues, we'll be doing a presentation on that. To answer, did I answer your question?
Well, yes, and I just want to just continue here, I also think we need to realize, Live Local is also workforce housing, especially for a lot of our seniors who still work.
I don't disagree with that.
And all you have to do is go in the Walmart, or go into Belks, or wherever, and you see these folks every day. So I think it's important to understand that, that this is another tool, I think, a useful tool in our toolbox. We're not going to change Tallahassee's mind today, obviously, you know, this is something we do have to deal with, and, you know, I see some benefits to it. But I think, more importantly, just moving on, I think on attracting, and I hate the word workforce, by the way, it just, like, everybody works. I mean, you know, at least ninety-nine point nine percent of us work, and even though that other small percent, they work to get to where they are, for the most part. So it's a horrible expression in my mind, I mean, we all work. We are going to have to provide affordable housing for younger people if we're going to attract those businesses that we want to come here.
And don't leave out the older residents as well, they're going to, according to what you've said, you've got both ends of the spectrum.
Yes, so.
A balance.
It's something that we have to balance, but we definitely need a younger workforce, I hate workforce, but younger people, as you yourself said, Ms. Ponteiri, you know, you talked about an affordable townhouse. I mean, my first house that I purchased was a townhouse, and I did that through the GI Bill, I didn't have to put any money down. Before that, it was apartments that I paid rent on. So we want to bring these businesses here, we want to lower the burden, the tax burden on our residents, so we're gonna have to get it from businesses. Everybody wants more restaurants and malls, but they also want high-paying jobs for their kids and their grandchildren, so this is a tough balancing act.
And remember, in a prior slide, in a prior part of the presentation, we got older.
Yeah.
By a lot.
Yes, by a lot.
I shouldn't say a lot.
Well, you did.
By more, yes, of course.
Not Nick.
By, not Nick, of course.
You will.
But certainly his jokes haven't gotten older. But those number of years is very concerning to me, in terms of how they jumped up, it's not, that wasn't my expectation, I promise you, that that was not the, the founders' forecast for our age increase at this point in time on the long timeline of Palm Coast.
And, and then we still have to balance this with the rights of property owners, people that own property, that have every right to build a product on their property. It's their money they're risking, it's their investments, and, and, and so if there's a demand for their property to have a certain product on it, they have every right to go after that. So it's a tough juggling act, there is no, you know, set in stone sort of thing.
A lot of, go back to the Ed Sullivan Show with the spinning plates, you've got a lot of them spinning, and hopefully none of them are wobbling, you gotta keep them all moving.
So I'm just suggesting we keep all that in mind.
Please do, of course.
I really appreciate everything that everyone has said up here, especially Councilwoman Ponteiri, thank you for sharing your growing-up experience with us. But I, also, we do have a lot of things to be considered when we talk about bringing in all these different types of housing that have been mentioned here, the affordable housing, workforce housing, life-stage housing, we've got all different kinds of names for it. So, when we talk about doing this, we've got to think about our land values, okay? What is it going to cost for a builder to come in and be able to build an affordable life-stage workforce house on land that costs eighty thousand dollars? What is it going to cost when we go into a neighborhood where we want to build one of these types of homes in that neighborhood, and the neighbors are up in roar, up in roaring about, "Not in my neighborhood." So, when I say there are a lot of things to be considered, there are a lot of things to be considered, because the first thing that they're gonna think, it's gonna bring my land value down. Now, I was in a neighborhood up in Eustis not too long ago, and what they had done is they built a housing development, which was actually set up originally, originally the land was allotted for a orphanage. But what they did was they took that land and they built six hundred square-foot houses right smack in the middle of a little, of a cute little neighborhood. And what they are, are six hundred square-foot homes with two bedrooms, a living room, a kitchen, and also a laundry area. But they, they set it up for young adults that had grown, had aged out of the foster care system. So, that might be an option in some cases, but we still have to be careful where we decide to place these homes. With all due respect to everyone that owns homes here in Palm Coast, I mean, we have to take all of this into consideration. It's not going to be an overnight thing that we can do, we're gonna have to really come up with a plan that is gonna work, and thank you, vice me, adanco, we have to do a balancing act here. And I think everyone would agree with that.
Okay.
Can I make just one more comment?
Please, of course.
About the technical part of things, I did see in the comp plan, and you brought this up earlier, Mayor, the accessory dwelling unit issue. Also something I'm not a fan of, only because I have seen what it has done in other locations. They started this up in Jacksonville, and there's been mixed results, I guess, depending on your subjective opinion, and I'll keep my opinion to myself, that being said. Again, I, I want to keep these concepts on the table and available, but I think we need to have an honest conversation on limitations. So, putting, just to say, okay, we're allowing accessory dwelling units now, to me, that's a hard no. There need to be limitations on what we allow, whether or not that's, the lot has to be a certain size, whether or not, you know, we allow accessory dwelling units on a certain percentage of properties within an area, I don't know what that looks like right now. And I don't know that that makes the comp plan rather than the LDC, again, this is something that I, I think I would leave to staff's discretion. But we need to have limitations in place, because if we don't, again, there will be abuse of the system. We've already, we've already had complaints on the STR issue, for instance. I guarantee you, people will buy lots and then rent out both the main residential unit and the accessory. So, where our intent was to provide affordable housing for maybe young adults who are looking for a small efficiency that is affordable while they're going through school or going into an entry-level job, what we're going to instead get are people from, you know, Minnesota or wherever out of state that are now STR-ing two units for the price of one. So there will be abuse, there always is. So I'm just looking for guardrails for limitations, and, and I look to you all for that brainstorming.
So, I think everyone, everyone certainly agrees, and just to add to that, in addition to the, let's call it the small efficiency or the ancillary, what do we call it, the accessory dwelling unit, that combination also invites a younger family, and if you go to the mortgage broker, you could now buy a house that you could never have afforded before on an income that a younger professional might have, if you've got the opportunity to rent the accessory unit. But with the guardrails, because if that's not what you get, then we lost the intent of the program. So you need to build in the regulations that would steer as much as we can protecting everybody's property values, that you could get to that finish line that we anticipated. It's the same thing with the apartments here, just as a, not a similar, but another example, those were originally, at least in my mind, or I was told, intended for younger residents. They filled up literally in the first couple of days with older residents. Now, that's not a problem, but that's an example of how the finish line was not achieved, in any stretch of the imagination. So, putting the requirements, the, the guardrails in is incredibly important, I agree.
Yeah, I, I just, sorry, really quickly, you know, my dad came out of the Air Force and started a pest control company, and when he was trying to get his company off the ground, he lived in an accessory dwelling unit down in the Dunedin area, Largo, Dunedin, around Tampa. I believe, and if he, he couldn't afford anything else, right? So I don't know that he would have been able to grow the company and do all the things that he was able to do because of that. So I believe in the concepts, I just don't want to see them be abused.
I'm just wondering, with the type of housing you were mentioning first on earlier, is there any type of experts we can bring in that can possibly give us some background on this?
I think you have one, one of your, one of your planners has great expertise in this kind of discussion.
Because this is sort of, you know, we need a little bit of an education, I think, totally.
I found, I found a bunch of experts that I'm working with on a regular basis over at the University of Florida, so they do exist, is I guess my point. Okay, I hope we haven't steered you way away from your presentation, but I have to tell you, city council's comments, I hope, are very helpful to where you're trying to get to. I know it's a little bit late in the process, but I'm glad you're getting to hear each council member's concepts and ideas, because I think they're very valuable to what you're trying to achieve.
Mayor, this was excellent, and I really appreciate it, and it was a lot of great feedback. And, you know, the comp plan is that broad thirty-five thousand foot level, and I just want to, you know, answer, Councilmember Ponteiri is exactly right, the Land Development Code is the implementation stage, and some of our menu board that we have, it's may include, you know, and our comp plan is really specific, says may, you know, do this, may do this, may do this, doesn't say shall, and then that's when we go back to the Land Development Code and, and work on the details, because it is really a comprehensive issue that needs a lot of tools in a toolbox to, to solve.
But are we at a natural breakpoint now, or how does everybody feel about that? Help me along, I don't know what the next section entails.
Sure. Ray, did you complete this last slide, you're done with housing?
Yeah, I think we're, we're finished with it.
Yes, Mayor, now would be a good time to break for lunch, it's all set up in the waterfront.
And let's talk about what, what time of, how long a break would, would be comfortable for everybody?
What awaits us on the other side?
Public comment?
Hold on just a second. How long a break are we?
I need about fifteen, twenty minutes, yeah.
Fifteen, so, all right, so we would, we would reconvene at approximately twelve-thirty, and I will, we're not finished with this yet, but I, I would accept public comment now, that's fine. Usually we would wait till the end of the presentation, so we're just halting the presentation but. Usually we would wait till the end of the presentation, so we're just halting the presentation, but since you're here, please.
Thank you so much for accommodating.
And I think you came last meeting thinking we were getting to the housing element and we never did, so.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much. I'm Sandra Shank. So I wanted to mention, in regards to live local, Councilwoman Pontieri and Vice Mayor Danko had some brilliant comments and I just wanted to give a little bit, maybe additional resources to help bring some understanding about what live local is. First of all, the Florida Housing Coalition, floridahousing.org, if you go to that website, they have extensive information about live local and what that means. And I 100% agree with Vice Mayor Danko that we have to remember that you have landowner rights. And then Councilman Clufus was asking, okay, how do we get to where we're trying to go? One of the things is that it doesn't matter the name that you call it, life stage housing, affordable housing, workforce housing. The fact of the matter is, what we looked at, if you have the proposed positions, for example, in the previous slide, if we took the most expensive at $115,000, that means a person earning $115,000, 30% of their monthly income towards rent would, I mean mortgage would be $2,875. If we look at an average price point of $363,000 with the interest rate of 8%, 5% down, that person's mortgage would be $3,216. So when we talk about workforce development, we're talking about your employees, we're talking about the people that service us and Walmart, Winn-Dixie, Publix, Aldi's, all of these people, we're talking about the land maintenance. So we have to remember that. If you want to look at ways about how do we get there, then we, one, we need to have a pre-development meeting. And the pre-development meeting is where these things are negotiated, where we're able through our land development code to lay out, this is what is expected in order for you to qualify as an affordable housing development. Another thing I would recommend that you look at is the Hannibal Square Community Land Trust. It's in Winter Park, Florida. It was, it was established in 2004. So when you talk about protecting land rights, if you have a land trust, for example, we have 20,000 acres that we'll be talking about at some point in time on the west side, what to do with it. If we were to establish a community land trust within that 20,000 acres, then we would be able to have housing within that, within that land trust that does not impact the, the appraised value of the neighbors. So if you visit Winter Park, you visit the Hannibal Square Community Land Trust, you're not going to identify which homes are affordable. Affordability does not mean low quality. That's not what it means and we need to understand that, what the property is going to look like. It doesn't mean that. I can go over to Hammock Dunes and see some properties falling apart and I definitely wouldn't consider those as affordable. The other thing is that we need to look at inclusionary zoning. Inclusionary zoning, that's another opportunity for us to be able to do it without having to be forced by live local. Councilwoman Pontieri is concerned about commercial and industrial. The reason why that was selected, if you go back and you look at in history, where have people who are low income been placed in zones that could possibly harm them? So if we want to look at something different, let's look at inclusionary land zone, inclusionary zoning, let's look at the Hannibal Square Land Trust. There are options to get there so that everybody can have a place to live that's affordable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public comment at this time? Okay, then I will recess the meeting until, let's say, 12:35 and we'll come back when everybody is present.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Give me a spoon.
Here's the lemon, we'll find something.
Is that your comic book?
That's wild, because that's before the trash. Yeah, yeah, that's wild. Thank you very much, absolutely, thank you.